Good evening and welcome everybody to a school board work session. This work session of the Oseo School Board is being conducted in person and in compliance with Minnesota Statute 13D point oh one. However, due to the current pandemic and consistent with directives of the CDC and applicable executive orders, it is not feasible to conduct this meeting in person without restricting the number of persons in attendance. Consistent with current healthcare guidance and applicable executive orders, up to ten members of the community are able to be present in the boardroom and space has been made for an additional fifteen persons to attend onsite in the nearby cafeteria. The purpose of the school board work session is to build trust and teamwork to exchange information and when applicable, provide direction and order to facilitate efficient and effective decision making at regular board meetings. There's three topics tonight. The monitoring report A through F, the two seventy-nine ready to restart, the opening of school report and update, the monitoring report E, the twenty twenty-two budget planning, preliminary levy, and the district recognized celebrations. The outcomes, or the outcome of this meeting, with the board members will receive reports and updates. On the opening of school and the twenty twenty-two budget planning, board members will also provide direction regarding which commemorative events to recognize at the district level. With that, I will turn it over to Superintendent McIntyre.
So, good evening, board members. A little odd to be doing work session in this format. Thanks for being flexible. It's a little awkward, but I am happy we're back in person for work sessions. So, we're hopefully on that path again here. But thanks for being patient and understanding. We normally do introductions. Our cabinet's in the other forum room to follow our social distancing and they'll come in as other portion of the evening comes up. So, again, a little awkward. Thanks for, you know, rolling with us on this. So, I think we'll just jump right into the agenda. Chair Ostaffi, are you comfortable with that?
That's mine.
Okay. Thanks for setting that up and we really were excited to get a chance to update you on our progress as we're starting the year. As you recall, on the twenty-eighth of August, the board approved the start of the year with, starting a week later on the fourteenth yesterday, and then two weeks of distance learning with the September twentieth start date in our hybrid model. And yesterday was a historic day for us, the first day of school in a global pandemic. It's a little hard to sometimes get your head around that that's our reality still. Hopefully, there will be an unlikely, hopefully never, another one like it. But I did want to acknowledge the incredible work that has been required up to this point and continues of our staff to not only launch, but continue to problem solve things that as we implement in our learning models. And they've just done a great job demonstrating problem solving skills on things we've just never done before. So, it's been a very busy first two days of the school year as we've gotten started. With the opening here, we really have focused hard on staff, preparing, getting them prepared to implement our safety plans. We're still filling open positions. That isn't uncommon at the beginning of a normal school year. It just seems to be a little more intense this year. And we're working hard to prepare for high quality instruction moving forward as well. We've had a few challenges the last couple of days, as you know, as we launch and we're working around the clock to problem solve those issues. I wanted to recognize the, acknowledge the frustration and exasperation of some of our students, families and staff as we start. So many things have come late, you know, right before the start of the year because of the situation almost all districts are in. And that level uncertainty right before school is just unusual, right? So, we appreciate the patience and understanding and I know it's frustrating and we're working as hard as we can to mitigate all those new challenges we're facing. So, our agenda tonight is primarily focused on the opening of school and cabinet members are going to assist me with this. We've worked hard to help all of us and you as a board develop a model that'll assist us as we go through the year to make decisions with the learning models. And so, tonight you're going to see what we're calling our Oseo Area Schools Learning Model Decision Making Tools. And we'll present on those information items and ask for your feedback. And the key components of it are, well, first, I'll go through a quick review of our safe learning plan levels, but then we'll get into some assumptions about informing decisions to change learning models. What are our key indicators that now that we're further into this to inform decisions? Our decision making framework that we've developed, a potential calendar or calendar for potential shifts in learning models, and then a dashboard that we've created to really try to monitor our progress and really give you a sense of where we're at today. So, this information we'll go through tonight reflects the amazing work of our staff across the system to start the school year. And the decision making tools will really give us a framework as we move through the year and potentially in and out of different learning models in response to the activity of the virus. So, one of the tools we will be reviewing later is already in this dashboard. And we've identified really the ten key indicators for opening, our opening school plan. And as we go through this information tonight, a little different than last time, I think we're in, with the way we've organized this, it's probably maybe most effective to ask you to kind of jot down those questions you have as we go through because a lot of times they get answered as we go through the different sequences. And then we'll, I'll ask Chair Ostaffi to facilitate any questions and comments at the end so you can try to get through efficiently. So, to start the presentation tonight, and this is a PDF document, so I've asked Joan to just do the scrolling through the document. You have a hard copy at your, at your location there and I'll try to refer to items on there as we go through, but we're going to give a quick review of some of the background information. So, if you look at page one, you've seen our safe learning plan levels previously. And this is really just a way to reflect how we have a continuum of options, including in-person, hybrid. There's a couple of different hybrid options as well we can explore and then distance learning as outlined by the Minnesota Department of Education. Again, we anticipate needing to move in and out of the three models, or at least we're preparing to if we need to, in response to our, the activity of the virus, along with our readiness based on those key set of indicators that we will go through in just a moment. In addition, you'll see more information around Distance Learning Academy and then, again, our readiness right now with our hybrid planning. So, if you look to page two, this is an attempt to identify some of the assumptions that we've been really taking into consideration to inform decision making here. So, some of these assumptions, I'll just kind of walk through. First, staffing, as you'll hear tonight, is continues to be a challenge for us. It is on a normal year, like I said before, and it is, I can tell you across the metro and across the state from what I'm hearing with other districts. This really framework, another assumption is that this framework is for making a district-wide model change. We've talked a lot about wanting to bring that to the board when it's a district-wide model change rather than a case-by-case school change, which we might have to do in response to activity of the virus if that were to happen. Another assumption is that we're moving to greater degrees of in-person learning. When we do that, it requires a little more time for data gathering and readiness assessment than changing from in-person to distance. So, that's just an assumption we have when we think of learning models. We are also assuming case counts will fluctuate this fall and this winter, both in the broader communities and amongst our staff, our students and our families. Another assumption is that we're trying hard to do the best we can with district-wide decisions being based on a unified, one district aligned approach to avoid confusion and aid and preparedness and have a little common standardization or parity across the district. Lastly, while the progression of the virus might create some uncertainty, we're going to, we're striving, we're pursuing clarity and consistency during a turbulent time and an uncertain time. If you look at the key indicators here, I've identified the ten that we've really focused in on. We spent a lot of time last meeting on staffing and instructional readiness. And the further along we get, we realize, you know, those who are critical, along with digital enablement, our building readiness, service readiness, when you think of nutrition and transportation, health and safety, childcare, and then meeting the state requirements based on the COVID nineteen case rate numbers, along with the requirement of consultation with MDE and the Minnesota Department of Health. And we also throw in Hennepin County because we talk with our county health department as well frequently. On page three, we put together a decision making framework we think kind of encapsulates all those things I just covered. So, when we look at this framework, in order to make decisions for changing models, we really start with a review of those key data and key indicators. So, the dashboard that you're going to see tonight, our case counts, our stakeholder survey data that we have, that's still, we feel important to consider. And then our, what was our COVID response team, we're now calling Incident Command Team to have language that's consistent with the MDE expectations for that work group. And we take that information, we do the next step on the middle of that slide, the consultation that's required with Department of Education and Department of Health, and then the consultation that's, we believe, desired and important. So, county public health, our district and school leadership, our union leadership and our staff families and students when we, when we're able to do periodic surveying of our stakeholders. We take that information, we develop the recommendations, the administration designs and develops informed recommendations to try to keep or change current learning models. And then we bring that to you for choice making. The board considers those recommended, recommended options and you take action. Once that happens, then we're in the far right of this diagram here where we, we launch into communication, implementation and refinement. So, we're going to, at that point, update stakeholders on status and any changes in learning models and then refine implementation as we get feedback, as we move in and experience the reality of each model and make adjustments. So, we try to come up with a kind of a decision making framework that would walk us through the various steps to get us to, that we can lean on as we move through the year. The page four is a recommendation towards really providing a calendar for a schedule and a bit of a rhythm whenever possible for reviewing the data and the conditions regarding learning model implementation, plus potential dates to shift towards learning models with greater degrees of in-person learning if that were to be the case. So, I've mapped out kind of potential shifts here. And it starts with alignment of when our COVID Incident Command Team meets to review information. And you can see the dates that have been scheduled really through December. And then the middle column here reflects the potential action dates or potential opportunities to shift models, and those are our regular board meeting dates that are already scheduled. And then potential, if we were at that point and needed to make a model shift with potential take action dates. This first one, October nineteenth is that Monday after MEA because of the short week, the week prior on MEA. So, normally it's about a two-week window, and if we're going to more in-person, I think it would require more of that two-week potential window. So, we'd have a decision and people with known families could have time to prepare and plan. And then if, if we are asked to move more quickly into maybe a distance learning model, we could potentially move even faster. But it, at least it begins to map out some, some kind of a schedule or a rhythm to give people a sense for when a decision would be made, when it would be implemented on the calendar, all the way up through the end of this calendar year. So, that's just a recommended, recommended approach that our administration has put together to give us some sense of pre-planning for certain times of the calendar here. So, with the dashboard, I'm going to do a high level, and I think Joan, that just scrolls right onto the next. So, the next three pages, there's a one page for each model we're reviewing tonight. Distance Learning, Distance Learning Academy and Hybrid. And this first page is really an at-a-glance, one-page indicator of the, or reflection of the ten indicators based on three levels. So, level one would be we're at risk, we're not ready, we, it requires intervention or delay of implementation. Level two in the yellow would be more of a, we're progressing, we're not on track to where we want to be, but we are making progress. And the level three is we are where we need to be in the green based on this point in time, so on track. So, with, I'm just going to quickly go over the three and then our team's going to come in and give you a little more detail, but you have a one-page at-a-glance for each model. And if you look at the first one here with Distance Learning, really we have all ten indicators at this time. And if you look to the far right, you'll see an L three, that just means level three. And we're at the on-track level for all ten when it comes to our distance learning model. If you turn to the next page, our Distance Learning Academy, we have seven out of our ten in the green at level three, but we do have three out of ten in a level two spot or we're progressing but not yet on pace, really talking about staffing, additional work with instructional preparedness, and when it comes to guidance and student support. So, item one, two and four are those areas that are still in level two, and you'll hear more about that in just a minute. And then lastly, our key indicators for the hybrid model, we have nine out of our ten at the green or level three readiness level with childcare still being at a level two that we're still planning around and doing additional workaround. So, with that high level review, I'm going to kind of start with, Laurel here is going to start with our staffing items for all three models. Each of our select cabinet members will talk through their indicator. So, Laurel will go through Distance Learning, DLA and Hybrid, and then we'll move on to indicator number two. So, thank you Laurel for walking through and you can just follow along, board members on the documents behind that that have the additional detail.
Thank you. As we talk about staffing for distance learning, I've indicated that we are on track. We have ninety-five percent or more of our licensed teacher positions filled. In fact, we have ninety-seven point eight percent of our teacher positions filled as of Thursday. We do have the majority of our Class Two ESPs, which are instructional, special ed, Title One ESP positions filled. For our non-instructional staff, we're at a lower rate, we're at eighty-five percent or more. However, the impact to student learning is less. So, while we're not at a hundred percent like we'd want to be, we still feel like we're on track with where we need to be in that distance learning model. As I indicated two weeks ago, we have a concern with our nursing positions. In a distance learning model, nurses are essential and because the students aren't in person, we still have some time, we have two more weeks to continue to fill those positions. Two weeks ago, we had seven positions open, we're now down to five. So, we are making progress on that as well. We also have thirteen continuous substitutes, which we've been utilizing to fill all of these open positions. We have two openings for our continuous subs and we're working on that. And we had, as of last week, sixty-three new applicants for substitute teaching. They aren't done with the process, but they have applied and Dante has been taking them through the application process and then the work with Pelsby. So, for distance learning, we are in the green, we're on track, ready to go. As we move into Distance Learning Academy, as Corey foreshadowed, we've had a different level of challenge with staffing. We are still finalizing the staffing needs for non-instructional staff. You heard yesterday in the board report from Corey that we have fifteen teacher positions open. That represents six point two percent. So, while it seems like a lot, percentage-wise, it's just over six percent of the teaching positions in DLA because they have so many staff. HR worked collaboratively with the admin team there and we filled all the positions all weekend with our continuous subs and our short-term subs so that we had staff in place for teachers yesterday. But we're not on track because we're not where we want to be. We are still identifying those needs, like I said, for the support staff, for A ESPs and ESPs. So, we'll continue to work on that. And then as we move into our hybrid model, the indicators are the same as in the distance learning model with a few highlights. So, while we're on track with our teacher positions and our Class Two ESPs, those that are indicated before we're concerning, such as the nurse positions and our continuous subs, we're on track, we're making progress, and we have two more weeks to fill as many of those as possible. So, they're on our radar and we're working diligently to get those filled. So, we're on track, but we're highlighting those for you because they are concerns to me as we move into a hybrid model in a couple of weeks. And now I'm going to turn it over to Michael to talk through the instructional model.
Tonight, I am going to highlight the Distance Learning Dashboard. Kelly and Steve will also highlight DLA as well as the hybrid. As each of us knows, readiness traditionally includes several indicators that when combined indicate how prepared we are to welcome scholars back to brilliance. This readiness dashboard is undoubtedly no different. With that intent, we offer the following data points around instructional preparedness using the following questions as our guide posts. What programs and services are critical to help support and provide educational excellence to our scholars? What resources exist to help support and build teacher capacity? And what is being done to engage families and build parental ability to support their scholar? Again, these were the guide posts that we determined whether our sites are ready to meet our scholars and families' essential needs. Also, I'd like to mention, this is the beginning of the kind of dashboards that you will begin to see as we continue moving forward with our status monitoring in our work and obviously guided by Corey. As I cover these key readiness indicators for distance learning, some of the data points remain consistent going forward with both Distance Learning Academy and the hybrid model. First, as we look at DL two, this is instructional preparedness, provide instructional guidance and professional development for reopening. This first one, this professional development and learning experiences, for licensed and non-licensed staff, we certainly have accomplished this. I'd like to take a moment just to highlight some of the pieces that we've done around the professional development. This includes Schoology and CSO, social emotional learning, flipped learning, elementary planning templates were identified for essential learning, remote interventions, and then the secondary templates for identifying essential learning standards there. Staff were provided two sustaining operations days during our traditional prep week and then by extending the start of our school year or move pushing it back, that allowed our staff for additional days to engage in planning and preparation for professional learning. All school leaders report that teachers know that they're, what their teaching assignments are. Eighty-eight percent of our school leaders report that non-licensed staff are aware of their schedules and duties during distance learning. As of nine eleven, eighty-five percent of our school leaders report that student schedules have been communicated to our families in the distance learning model. All school leaders report district-level guidance that was put out, have shared the expectations with their respective staff. And ninety-six percent of school leaders report a high to medium level of confidence that staff is prepared for remote instruction as we compare the thirty-three percent high and sixty-three percent at the medium level. As we transition to DL three, instructional preparedness, instructional content is prepared across all sites and levels. On nine eleven, where we, where this information came from, on nine eleven, a survey was provided to our building leaders seeking their perspective regarding readiness. Again, this dashboard could and would look different next week. As such, I suspect readiness will continue to trend upward as we grow and learn together. CSO was a new purchase last spring to assist our teaching and learning. However, I'm happy to report that a hundred percent of principal leaders reported from hot, medium to high. And again, this is at the CSO at the elementary level. As we look at Google Meets, a high level at eighty-two percent. And as you look at Schoology, seventy-three percent. As Laurel alluded to, this fifty percent around teachers have completed the seven hours of professional learning. We, obviously if you see the due date in October, we are progressing towards that goal. If you want to break that down, we have about thirty-three percent at the elementary level and forty-one percent at the secondary level. In addition, three hundred and eighty ESPs have completed this learning as well. Transitioning to DL four. The Student Virtual Backpack and the Parent and Family Toolkit, as each of you know, last week we were able to provide a series of webinar experiences for our families, show it on our webpage, and then currently they reside in YouTube. They are also, and as of earlier today, there was about five hundred views for the experience that Jeremy and his team put together. So, the information is out there and we're seeing that it's being accessed. What the backpack looks like at the elementary level is core technology tools with video clips to support student included support for iPads and Chromebooks, online curriculum resources, and then login information is what the backpack contains at the elementary level. At the secondary level, daily and weekly planners, subject-specific resources and technology quicklens, including support for the use of Chromebooks. And then the Parent and Family Toolkit, it's going to be some of the same information, but again, one of the things as we consider the learning, right? We learned what distance learning looked like and sounded like and felt like for our parents, so we knew that there was some intentionality we had to do to build that partnership with our families. So, there's a family toolkit. At the elementary level, there's core curriculum, online resources and links, updated curriculum guides for each grade level, social emotional learning resources, and researches how to use CSO, Google Suites and other tools. At the secondary level, using Schoology and Synergy, Google Meets and G Suite, social emotional learning once again, a student planner templates to plan for the week and the daily schedule. And again, the intent to partner with our families so they can become partners with us towards the brilliance of their child. All school-linked mental, mental health providers are fully staffed and continue to meet with scholars. Social workers are coordinating to ensure clear communication with families regarding social work services and distance learning. And as of nine eleven, ninety-one out of ninety-five of our families presenting homeless or highly mobile were slated to receive services such as transportation and supplies. Some of the areas that we're mindful of and that we continue to monitor is that the IP case managers are in process of contacting parents and guardians to ensure the IP reports are in place and we're providing those essential supports to the scholars. And counselors and social workers are connecting with students who have identified needs such as mental health and transitioning back to school support. At this time, I'd like to hand off to Steve as he covers DLA.
Leaning's now in the job description.
Other duties as assigned?
Good evening. I'll be sharing the readiness criteria for the Distance Learning Academy, specifically DLA two, three and four. So, as you observed from the overall indicators on the dashboard, two of the three, DLA two and four, are designated as progressing and not yet on pace. DL three is designated on track. So, as Corey and others have said, you know, the context in terms of DLA is that everyone's been working hard to launch, we're making the necessary adjustments to serve the students and families, and acknowledge there's much more work to be done. So, as you're aware, the DLA now represents the largest school in Oseo and serves over five thousand K-12 students. So, as it relates to DLA two, instructional preparedness and guidance, we have placed the following sub-indicators into the Meets, or excuse me, into the on-track. As it was stated, similar kinds of professional development was shared, so professional learning experiences have been shared, as well as staff were provided with the two sustaining operation days and four additional days for planning, preparation and professional learning. Slight difference though in terms of DLA, you'll notice a little different wording there in terms of how we did the checklist and surveyed. We surveyed our DLA administrators, which were four of them, and at that point, they reported a high to medium level of confidence that the staff is prepared for remote instruction. And as that was shared, that's Screencast, Flip, Socratic Seminar, different elements that, that Michael spoke to. So, again, as you can see, the first two are identical to what Michael just shared and are listed on his track. And so, essentially guidance was shared with teachers regardless of their teaching assignment. Moving to the left, the following sub-indicators were identified as progressing based on how the administrators responded again. Specifically, one of the major challenges has been around staffing and communication. Although we place these as progressing, we know that this remains a frustration and we're not on pace. So, as you see, they're listed there. DLA admin team reports, teachers know their teaching assignments, report, non-licensed staff are aware of their schedules and duties, the admin team reports the student schedules have been communicated, and of course, that the DLA admin reports district-level guidance on distance learning expectations. on distance learning, expectations has been shared. So again, these indicators we're finding are in progress. Moving on to DLA three, instructional preparedness and content. So as you see, we place these sub-indicators as on track based on the feedback from the DLA administration. School leaders reporting a high level of confidence that staff is prepared to use the following for instructional support and delivery, Google meets seventy-five percent, CSO seventy-five, and SchoolEg fifty percent. Again, this is surveying for administrators. So overall, we find that this is on track. Finally, the DLA four, you'll see in the detail the following sub-indicators that, again, we consider to be on track. Michael spoke to the student virtual backpack, are ready to start family webinars, the toolkits, and the school linked mental health providers are staffed and continue to meet with students on an employment basis. So again, we felt these were in place. However, the indicators that we are considering progress are progressing is social workers coordinating to ensure clear communication with families. And in this case, social worker services in DLA will be provided by two social workers assigned to DLA and/or a social worker from their home building. Also too, the social workers are reviewing IEPs and coordinating services for students. Again, all IEP case managers, in terms of this sub-indicator, are in the process of contacting parents and guardians. So in some cases, case managers have received their caseloads within the last week, some as late as yesterday, and are beginning to contact parents and guardians to discuss learning plans. So the delay in case managers getting caseloads related in part to the number of students identified as DLA and identification appropriate program designation, resource, skills, speech, et cetera. And then, of course, services can begin as students have active IEPs in place, but conversation is important to ensure that parents and guardians have input. And then finally, counselors, counseling services in DLA will be provided by the counselors assigned and in their home building. And of course, the element of this is this will depend in part on the need of the students and prior relationships. So overall, we find this indicator in level two, progressing. I'm going to turn this over to Kelly.
I'm here to talk about the key readiness indicators for the hybrid model. So, oh, yep, you got it up there, Joan, thank you. So all three, instructional preparedness for guidance, instructional preparedness for content, and instructional preparedness for student supports, all are in level three and are fully on track. So I'm going to begin with H two, which is instructional preparedness around guidance. And you've heard a lot of these now a couple of other times, so I'm going to just go through them really, really, really quickly. You'll see that the first indicator under H two is that a hundred percent of school leaders report district level guidance on hybrid instruction has been shared, professional learning experiences have been developed and communicated for licensed and non-licensed staff. Staff were provided two sustaining operations and four additional days, and Michael explained about the four additional days just a moment ago. And ninety-six percent of school leaders report that there's either a high level or a medium level of confidence that staff is prepared for remote learning. So thirty-three percent high, sixty-three percent medium. In the H three category, instructional preparedness for content, the school leaders report a high level of confidence around Google meets at eighty-two percent, SchoolEg for the secondary level at seventy-five percent, and CSO at the elementary level for forty-seven percent. And again, fifty percent of all teachers have completed the required seven hour professional learning. And finally, in H four, around student supports, you've already heard about the student virtual backpack, the ready to start, restart family webinars, the parent and family toolkit, school linked mental health providers being fully staffed, social workers coordinating clear communications with families. You've heard about our homeless and highly mobile students and that we're making sure they all receive services such as transportation and school supplies. And then IEP case managers are in process of contacting parents and guardians, and counselors are connecting with students. And both of those have been identified as, even though they're on track, they're areas we want to closely monitor. And we also want to closely monitor, I forgot to point out, under H three, about the staff completing the seven hours of professional learning. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Anthony.
I am here to talk tonight about digital readiness. And so if we refer to DL, DLA, and H five, I'll be referring to all of those simultaneously. As I mentioned in previous sessions around our preparedness around technology, we're developing our plan around a universal model that will support within all three of those spaces. So as we talk about digital preparedness, it lands itself in all of those spaces. The key indicator to start with is really getting those devices out and in the hands of students. And between our two deployment days and transportation where we delivered devices last Friday and going through a lot of deployment out of the ESC yesterday and today, we are right around ninety-seven percent of all students having devices. So we started with on September first and second, having a massive device deployment at each one of the sites, in which we had seventy-five percent of our devices picked up at that time. Then last Friday, any student who had not come to get their device on the first and the second, we had a transportation route bring those devices to their home with a scheduled time and get those out. And that got us to close to that ninety-seven percent. I don't have an exact number at the end of the day today, but a majority of the other additional devices have been provided to families. If you stopped by the ESC yesterday, you would have seen cars wrapped all the way around this building and a lot of staff working to get those devices into the hands of kids rather quickly. Any remaining devices now are going back to sites. We'll be sending out communications to families that they can go to their homeschool and pick up those, their devices. If they still don't have a device, come tomorrow. We've still been working with rearranging devices as we're determining students who have left our system and new students that are coming in and those new enrollments. So again, trying to shuffle devices around and making sure we have devices in the hands of every student. In terms of all the platform readiness, everything has been up and going. The platforms themselves, SchoolEg and CSO, we heard a lot about teacher preparedness and readiness. Those platforms were all up, running, and functioning the way we intended for the first day of school. We did have some hiccups with staff who were working internally on our network with some slow network issues that have been fixed and resolved. We have not heard no network issues as of today. We have been navigating a lot of questions coming in from families, in particular around logins and passwords, been working and sending out communications to families over the last evening and today, where we're working on a universal password reset to get all families unified around our password convention, so we can provide a higher level of support and engagement and get any student who has not been able to log in successfully in successfully here before the end of this week. The last piece of preparedness when we talk about technology and digital readiness is really about connectivity and working with families on internet access. As you'll notice from data last year, we were able to get a hundred percent of families that, you know, were identified of needing internet support last year connected and supported with internet access. The resources that we have are based on that data. As of yesterday, we have forty-six families who we are working with to get connected with internet resources and have the resources to provide that. The one highlight that we have in there, because we're working with spring data, we, there's kind of an unknown number that we're working to see as we get started here. So in the springtime, there were a lot of programs provided by internet service providers as well as bill forgiveness or bill extensions that occurred at the time. So we know that there may have been families that had independently connected with internet service that whatever situation changed over the course of the summertime may be needing additional resources. So we're still working with buildings to identify any of those needs and numbers. And we have a plan in place to address families who are requesting and needing the internet services and supports as we continue to move forward. So that is my update on our digital readiness at this time. We are in the green and progressing as we have intended, even minus the few little hiccups here for the first day or two. We've got some good plans in place around that. One of the pieces that you may have heard around tech support and responsiveness, we've got a plan in place to address that. With devices going back to homeschools tomorrow for the sites to manage the remaining device deployment, the entire tech team is being shifted back to just triage help desk tickets and rapid response, where the team for the last day and two days now has been really ingrained in the deployment of devices. And our same level of team has not been on that help desk as we usually have, which will change starting tomorrow. Thank you. And I'll hand it over to.
So I'm going to go through the operations areas of the dashboard. Overall, those operations areas that are indicated on the dashboard are all in level three, which is our on-track range for readiness. I will say that the four-day delay that we had for the start of school was very helpful in allowing us the time to put those finishing touches on our operational planning work that our team has been engaged in for the last several months. So I'm going to start my comments in the distance learning section. And as you can imagine, the operational requirements for the distance learning model are much different than they are for the hybrid or the in-person model. But at the same time, because we do have some of our staff in our buildings and because we are offering some of our services during these two weeks, it's important to gauge our readiness. So DL six on your dashboard is for our health and safety readiness for distance learning. While we don't have students in the building, there are still several health and safety-related items that need to be implemented because of the staff that may be in our schools during these two weeks. This includes having PPE readily available at each building, having hand sanitizer accessible to teachers and our staff, and providing training materials to staff on how to use surface cleaner and disinfectant, as well as our COVID response best practices. We have previously discussed with the board the efforts that we are taking, that are taking place to create a COVID site preparedness or safety plan for each of our buildings, based on the guidance from the Department of Health, the Department of Education, and the Department of Labor. Those plans have been approved by our health and safety team, and they've been provided to staff with the expectation that they review and understand their role in that plan. Finally, as directed by the governor, each staff member have been provided with a code to receive a free COVID nineteen saliva test code to use when an employee feels that they need it. It's important to note that this is not a required test before coming back to the classroom. So as you can see from the dashboard, all of our efforts in this area are on track for the distance learning model. If we go to DL seven, this outlines our building readiness and reflects the work of our facilities operation team. This includes cleaning and preparing buildings and classrooms for teachers and staff to use as needed, including the prep work that's typically done after our summer construction projects each year. It also includes working with building staff and in alignment with the site preparedness plan to install floor decals and signage to remind staff of social distancing and proper hygiene. Finally, ensuring our custodial staff has a sufficient supply of cleaning chemicals to ensure regular sanitization of high-touch areas, including but not limited to our restrooms. The amount of cleaning will again vary depending on the size of the building and the number of staff that may be accessing each of those sites for the first two weeks. Again, as you can see from the document, our building readiness for the distance learning model in this area is level three or on track. The last area for operational readiness in our distance learning model is in DL eight, which is our service readiness, and this is particularly addressing our transportation and our nutrition service departments. The big piece here is really focused on nutrition service. As you know, we recently were informed from the USDA and the Department of Education that our school district is able to offer free meals to all of our students while funding is available, which at this point is projected to be through the end of December. This caused our nutrition service team to have to adapt very quickly to a new model and to get communication out to our families about our curbside offering during our distance learning. Because of the late notice of MDE and also the turnaround time to schedule transportation, delivery of meals is not possible during these first two weeks. However, curbside meals are available for free at all of our schools for these first two weeks of distance learning. Our nutrition service team is fully staffed and we have procured and distributed to sites the necessary supplies for this curbside offering. As it relates to the first two weeks of distance learning, there are not any transportation components outside of what Anthony just talked about with the delivery of those technology devices that happened last week. So with that, our service readiness for distance learning is level three and on track for this area. Now, if we flip down to the Distance Learning Academy section, this section really mirrors the operational readiness we just discussed with the distance learning section, with the exception of DL eight. There you will see that transportation is reflected in that routing and transportation service has been planned for meal delivery for those Distance Learning Academy families that cannot present themselves to one of the sites that will be offering the free meals pickup. All of the other components of the dashboard in the Distance Learning Academy is the same as the distance learning section and is level three or on track. So then, if we flip down to the hybrid model section, I want to draw your attention first to the H six section. I will just highlight those items that are new or different from the distance learning portion. The first is that for health and safety, a plan has been created to communicate the expectations for students and staff to do a symptom screening as recommended by the Department of Health before they come into our buildings each day. And this communication is planned to go out the week of the twenty-first, so next week. Also, as we have previously discussed with the school board, we have developed a district-wide COVID response team to address any COVID exposures or suspected exposures in one of our buildings. This team has been trained and is prepared to begin work. You will see in blue text that we are still waiting to hire and train one member for this team to be fully staffed. We do anticipate this being complete by September twenty-fifth, so before students are to come back into our buildings. The other item that you will see in blue in the health safety section is the site preparedness plan implementation. I am pleased to announce that of our thirty-two sites that have site preparedness plans, all but four have approved plans in place already. Those include the ESC as well as the Enrollment Center. So our health safety team is working closely with those four site leadership teams to address any outstanding items and also to get an approval by the end of this week. Once students and staff are back in our buildings, the health safety team will continue to do regular walkthroughs to ensure there's continued compliance with those site preparedness plans. So if we move on to H seven, the facilities team has been busy partnering with our building leaders to move desks and chairs and other furniture out of classrooms and around in classrooms to ensure that social distancing is taking place in those spaces. We have also adjusted our HVAC systems to ensure constant air circulation, and we've trained our custodial team on how to properly deep clean an area in a building if there is a COVID exposure. is a COVID exposure. A couple areas in blue that we are still working through, the first is that we still have around eight buildings that are working to install signage and floor decals at their sites. This is above and beyond the base package of signage, so it did not prevent them to get approval for their site preparedness plan, but it's still work that we're planning to deliver on before students come back into the building. Also, we have installed Plexiglas in each cafeteria in the district. And with the exception of Maple Grove Senior and Osseo Senior, that work is happening this week, and it will be completed by the end of the week. Regardless of these very few areas of work that needs to be accomplished, we have designated the service readiness as Level Three or on-track. So, looking at H eight, you will see that we are on-track and ready for the hybrid model in our service readiness section, related specifically against transportation and nutrition service. Our buses are prepared, our routing info is ready to be shared with families. Our bus vendors have a plan to regularly clean and sanitize our buses. They have, we've provided them masks for all of the buses, so if students present themselves to a school bus and have forgotten their mask at home, we can provide them one. Our transportation team is also working through a plan for some students in center-based special education programs to be transported on additional days, in addition to their two days a week in the AB model. Our nutrition service team has a plan to serve hot meals to students that are in school and then also to give them meals at the end of the day for them to take home with them for when they are in distance learning the next day. They have also developed a plan to serve free meals to students for the weekend. This will be done on Fridays, which is also allowable by the USDA. We will be using a three-week menu rotation of some of the more popular meals, and our kitchens are stocked with the necessary food, as well as those serving materials that we talked about earlier. Overall, while there are very few items that we are still focused on from an operational standpoint, we believe that we are on-track for each of the distance learning, the Distance Learning Academy, and the hybrid models. So, with that, I will turn it over to Brian.
I'm here to talk about our readiness for our childcare programs. And in our distance learning under DL nine, we are very pleased to say that we're at ninety-eight percent hours covered for staffing. Now, last, we did have to work with HR to get to that point. Last Wednesday, we were at eighty-four percent, but then we did a call-out for subs and reassigning of some K-12 school day ESPs to get us to that ninety-eight percent. So, we are in Level Three green, on-track. And then if you switch to DLA nine, I guess there's kind of two ways of looking at DLA nine. One is it's not necessarily applicable to childcare, so we're green because it's not applicable. The third section for our hybrid model, H nine, this is gonna be our most difficult model to staff at, and we're currently, I put us in yellow that we're progressing. This week, we're starting to put staffing in. Tomorrow, we'll take our first full attempt at staffing in the hybrid model, since we just finished staffing in distance learning over the weekend. And I would say, you know, if we get up to the eighty percent plus again, I think it'll be more likely that we'll get into the green more rapidly like we did for distance learning. I think folks understand the difficulty for us, even in distance learning and hybrid, is we typically do not hire staff to work during the middle of the day for childcare. So, all of my staff that we had lined up last spring to work this fall have shifts that are six-thirty to nine or three to six, for instance. We don't normally staff from nine to three, so this is difficult. Last spring, it was easier to do because we had more access to staff who typically work during the day at their K-12 site. Now, if we're in hybrid, they're going to be assigned to be working face-to-face four days a week at their school during the middle of the day. So, this is a potential difficult area. So, if we are below that eighty percent, we'll probably do a number of steps. Number one, of course, we'll work again with HR to access our subpool. We're already starting to reach out to people who've worked for us in summers previous because some of them are college students. And as we know, various colleges have entered the year in different levels. So, for example, the U of M is not meeting face-to-face this first semester, so maybe we can access some of our staff that worked during the summer days. Potential of combining sites, transportation has already let us know that they can help us with that. In fact, they do that with us in previous years when we have students who attend Birch Grove and Park Brook who attend Kid Stop at Zane Wood and then bus to school in the morning. So, we have a tradition of doing that. Some of my colleagues throughout the state, these would be more drastic measures. They've shortened hours. So, for instance, in Shisago, they're not offering before-school care, but they're offering during the day and after-school because they can staff that fully. And you're required to provide staffing for the midday per the governor's order, so that's one of the trickier parts of this, because you have to provide childcare during the school day. One of the things that helps is people are signing, there was two registrations, because in the hybrid model, people aren't necessarily signing up for a consistent five-day-a-week schedule, right? So, I might sign up for care for after-school on the days that I'm attending in person, but not sign up for care on the days I'm doing distance learning. Or I might do both. So, there's a lot more varied schedule. And of course, our last resort would be to do some type of waitlist or prioritization for childcare, which would obviously start with tier-one essential workers. That's a little bit of a longer-winded hybrid explanation, but I just kind of wanted you to understand the nuances of staffing for a time of day that we don't normally have people working. So, that would be my update for childcare. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Brian. So, indicator ten is the last indicator, and I'll just speak to that briefly. Really, it's most relevant at the hybrid model level. We know for distance learning in our DLA, it's not so much a factor, but it is for our hybrid considerations. And as we've been watching, in addition to the other nine factors, we watched the case rate data, right? And we've actually seen a nice trend down recently. What at one point our Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center numbers were at the highest in the county, they've really almost been cut in half over the last four reporting periods. We know this could be a roller coaster, but that's the trend we would all want to see if we're desiring getting students back into school more. The only kind of interesting change is smaller amounts of change in Maple Grove and hardly any change in Plymouth, and actually Rogers is at their highest point they've been at. So, we see this kind of hitting a little bit more as you get further out into the suburbs around the metro. But, you know, if that trend were to continue, when you think about our calendar back on page four, we could be potentially thinking about it in the 29th, thinking about is the data support a transition to a more in-person learning, which we would then put in place two more, you know, about two weeks out. Or even if we're at a point in the year where we had to go the other direction, we can use those potential action dates to make those decisions as we continue to use our key indicator dashboard items here that you've heard about that we're kind of launching here to really track our readiness in these models. And clearly, the heavy lifting is early on in the year, getting these models ready to go. But, you know, we're also wanting to be ready if and when the data supports it, you know, getting ready to bring our elementary students in. And ideally, we're all back, right, at some point, but we're gonna clearly follow the model and the data around that. So, there's not much specific information in there, but I think you've probably got the most information from the last month and a half around the case rate data. We'll get another update Thursday, which I'll send to you again like we do each week. We're really closely monitoring the activity of the virus in the cities in our district that are over 10,000 residents. So, I guess to wrap this up, what you kind of heard, our goal was to really be kind of transparent about what are we, feel like we're on pace with and what are we still struggling with, honestly, at this point in time, and using a way to measure that or evaluate ourselves on where we're at, and then that launches us, what do we need to do moving forward. So, the dashboard kind of helps us give a, provides us a tool to do that and with this leveled system with what we think are the ten most impactful items for our success moving forward. And so, you kind of heard staffing being one of the biggest ones and just filling positions. And with all the teacher and staff movement we've had to go through the last few weeks, we're still completing that work, even as we're launching into the year. And we have hard to fill positions during any year, honestly, and we go through those challenges in the normal year, and it's a little bit more magnified right now. And we're working through some of those things as well. So, I think I'll just end with, you know, this is our current reality, and we still have a lot of work to do. A few of our cabinet members pointed that out. We've still got some areas where we gotta continue to improve. And this is, you know, I was looking at a few of these, honestly, and I thought last Friday and to today, things have changed in a couple of days. So, it is a little bit of a challenge to keep this really up to date and not be too much of a task-intensive process, right? So, we're trying to find a quick balance of a, at a glance, and a quick way of assessing our progress on a pretty frequent basis. And that was our intent, and we'll continue to refine this. But we're, I guess at this point, we're really looking for some feedback from you as a board on, is this helpful to you and to our progress as we move into the year and as we keep moving into, deeper into the year and all the potential movements that we might have to make. So, maybe Cheryl Staffie, I'll turn it back to you. I think our team, you know, they need a little wait time if they need to answer questions because they're walking in from the forum room, so we'll, that's the downside of this format tonight. But with that, we could turn it over to you to manage the comments and questions you have.
All right, thank you Superintendent McIntyre. At first, I'd like to thank you. I know you had put some drafts together of this and shared it with us and took the feedback, and I think this has been very helpful, the dashboarding, the way you put that together. So, thank you for doing that. With that, I will start with questions, and let's start with two each, and then we can wrap around and come back if we have more. I'm sure we will. And I guess we can keep those two to each category or try to keep that so we don't have people running back and forth all the time and taking up that time. So, Director Douglas, if you want to start?
Sure, thank you. So, my first question, well, first I want to say that I do really appreciate this information. It's highly detailed and informative, and I was wondering if the dash, how the dashboard will look when we're talking about bringing back just elementary, that's considered still kind of hybrid, but I don't see any like already-defined space for that in here. So, I'm wondering if there'll be an additional dashboard for elementary in-person or, and/or full in-person.
Yeah, great question. We haven't gotten to that point yet.
Right.
We really want to make sure we had our, where are we at with the decisions the board has made up to this point? So, that would be the next steps as we continue to plan ahead. If we start moving in that direction, then we'll refine this to reflect those different types of hybrid models. Right now, it's a K-12 model, but we can tweak this, and probably the indicators aren't much different. We just now look at it through the lens of maybe all elementary and secondary hybrid, for example, right? Or if we're fortunate enough, we can move that direction towards in-person. Whenever that happens, continuing to do that. So, yeah, you're foreshadowing kind of where we need to go next.
Yeah, yeah. And I guess the reason I'm asking that is because when we look at the potential shifts in learning models slide, that was, I think, page two, page four, I just want to make sure that as a board and a district, we're able to share that information before we're at the point where we're making that decision. So, I guess that would just be my request as we get there, and I'm sure that you're already thinking it, but I just wanted to make sure that I shared that. And then I also wanted to ask, because we've had so many questions about IEPs and families concerned about not being reached, can we put out a message for families about when to expect to, because I know that that's an area that we're not quite there yet on, having the case managers reaching out to families, so that parents are aware of the timeline of when they should expect to hear from someone by, so that they're not spending this first couple of weeks worried that they're being left behind?
Yeah, thank you. That is our goal. Soon as we have, we have a little more staffing work to do, filling in some, especially in the DLA, that's probably where our biggest challenge is right now. So, as soon as we have a sense for when that can be, and it's realistic, then that's our full intention, to let families know when they'll be able to meet with their, excuse me, their case manager and start planning those things out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Director Muscata Jones?
So, along those same thoughts that I had questions about, so I'm hearing you say that we, it's potential that we could do different models in elementary and high school, correct?
Within hybrid, yeah.
Yes, okay.
It's consistent with the state model, those five levels?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, my question is, just because in the past, we've heard that we wanted some consistency, and so I just want to clarify for everyone that that's an option on the table. I'm wondering if we've thought about moving to get our pre-K to like grade-two students in a little bit sooner, because they're our youngest learners and they're a priority on the governor's list?
We haven't spent much time on that yet.
Okay.
We've really only looked at it through the current model of the state with, and I know some districts have been looking at that that might be a little more nimble than us as far as size.
Right.
But we've really only been looking at, when can we potentially bring elementary back, you know, K-five?
Sure.
So, we haven't had much time to analyze whether we would be able to do anything ahead of that. It really depends on kind of our decision points. And that's why I feel like the calendar helps us at least anticipate when those decisions are and when we might implement, so we have lead time, not only for us, but for our families and staff. So, Jackie, we would need a little more time to just dig into that and see if that's possible.
And then I've also had families with IEPs reach out that have been really concerned, particularly, I think it's because we haven't staffed all of the DLA people, specifically families that now want to switch to hybrid because they're worried about the DLA. And so, what, who should they talk to? What can we tell them? What, I mean, what kind of assurances can we give them that?
Well, our goal is to get fully staffed as fast as possible. We are using substitute teachers that are licensed and that meet those requirements too. So, that's really important for us. And, you know, as you know, Jackie, so well, special ed is hard to fill normally.
Uh-huh, yeah.
So, we've been challenged by this. We have been, and for anyone that wants some kind of accommodation that way, we've asked them to work with their, either the DLA administration or their homeschool principal.
Okay.
So that they can work into, because there's a little bit of a, I mean, we have to know some unique things about the needs of the students or any IEPs.
Right.
And whether those needs can be met and so forth, right?
Right.
So, it requires some IP meeting process, and I don't, I have the attorney right next to me, but I wanted to remind you of that, that some of the due process things that come with it.
Well, I, I know for me and the special ed teachers that I'm working with, that they have to look at every single IEP. I just want everyone to know this is what we're up against. So, special ed teachers have to look at every single IEP and put in contingencies for every single plan that we might have. So, usually, a special ed teacher might be looking at a certain amount of IEPs, but they have been set already.
Yeah.
Now, they have to look at every single one and go through all those contingencies.
And I would add, in a, whatever normal is anymore, in a typical year, this first week is usually that point where case managers are reaching out and making connections with families and building their schedules or case management and service schedules. So, that's still kind of a typical process the first week of a year. We're doing our best to get out in front of that clearly and with the case managers that are in place.
Thank you. That's my tip.
Here comes Kate.
All right.
Hello.
Thank you. Director Simons?
I'm sorry, Kate Emmons is here.
Oh, hey, Kate.
I'm sorry. Kate Emmons is here. I think maybe, do you, do you have a response to that? Sorry.
We had to give her walk time.
Yeah.
So hello to my friends in the green room who encouraged me to show up here and to Cheryl Stoffey and the board. Nice to see you all. I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear the last question, but I do know that there are three teachers. We are three understaffed at this point. So as far as beginning a school year, this is kind of like a miracle. So we've really worked hard in staffing the system, the system, not just DLA. So at this point, we are just three staff members that we're using substitutes for at this time. And I think, was there another question about caseloads? So we did work throughout the week, once we got started on that, once we got our numbers. Since I think, it was August 29th, we started matching faces and spaces and caseloads. And at this point, all teachers have their caseload as of this Monday morning, past Monday morning. I'm sorry, people in the buildings had their caseloads. It was the DLA staff that did not have theirs. And that's, those were the latest members to get their caseloads. And since today's Tuesday, they've been working really hard. And so there are families, as I'm hearing, you're hearing from, that haven't heard from them yet, but they will hear from them. I promise you. I mean, that is number one priority for our students to feel welcomed back to school. And was there a question, what, as I was walking up here, that I missed?
No, I think that covers it.
Is that it? I think that really covers it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
And Kate, out of those three, that's out of how many? You're three short out of 60, out of 100, out of six?
Oh my goodness. Oh. Oh, out of special ed teachers, like that's OTs and PTs. Do you just resource teachers? We have about 100 and, oh, a little over 100, because some are shared and some are part-time. We have a little over 100 resource teachers and then another probably 150 between even more, 200 possibly, between social workers, counselors, OTs and PTs and so on. So I think I'll end with everybody, nurses and everybody. I think it's about 400.
Okay. So that three is about 1%. So, thank you.
It's quite small for this. I mean, it's kind of a miracle. So people have been really working hard to get that done this year. With the focus on what we're doing. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Fantastic.
Director Simons?
So first of all, thank you so much for this scorecard and this excellent information. This is something that we've been working on since I've joined the board to really have good clarity as to where we're trying to get to, where we're at today. I think it's really important that we have this transparency because it also drives accountability. We can't know what we need to fix if we don't understand where we're at today. And as we've articulated before, that mindset to say, what do we need to close the gap and what support is needed from the board is of utmost importance. And I noted that when Brian was talking about his section in particular, he had a lot of great ideas about what he's doing to close the gaps. I appreciate that insight as well, not just where we're at, when, where we're trying to get, but what it's going to take to get there. So please continue to, I appreciate that, that and please continue to encourage that from all of our leadership. I think similar to Director Douglas' question, my concern is that we are not yet looking at what our readiness is for in-person. We've been at numbers at the county level since August 4th. Now knowing the leg, that we don't see that until later, it's been a month that we're seeing that we could be ready for in-person. So it concerns me a bit to look at the timeline and say that we might not offer that until October 19th. So I have two questions to that. So number one, can we base our decision-making off kind of a data point or a number of weeks or something instead of a school board meeting? Because our school board can be called at any time to make a different decision. So that, that's my feedback is can we think about how we are monitoring that?
So the guidance has been from the county and the state health department for once a month, or at least three, at a minimum, three data points. So our regular meetings are four weeks apart. So that felt like a really good, consistent, once a month is about, you know, meeting that kind of requirement. Along with this, as you know, we've just been hyper-focused on a better distance learning model than the spring and prepping for the hybrid model to do that well when we started in two weeks. So now we're moving into that readiness stage for the, whatever the next model might need to be.
Right. Once we get into that rhythm, it'll, it'll feel like it makes more sense.
So I was trying to map this out, kind of following the guidance we've been given from our state agencies around that kind of parameter. And then also, especially if we're moving towards more in-person, if we do, we're going to need, I like the idea of naming it and having a little lead time to prep it and be ready and people know when it's going to start. And you've noticed here, a lot of those start dates are on a Monday. So we've also allowed for any last minute weekend work to happen, especially around operations. Because we'll be moving furniture, we'll be doing lots of physical setup things when we're bringing more people into the buildings. If we go the other way, we might be able to move a little faster, like we'll go more into distance because we've got more of those options in place, right?
Right. And so on that note, can you help me understand why it takes three weeks to move to more in-person? So because if we have three weeks of data points and then three weeks to actually make the change, it's six weeks. I mean, things could radically, I mean, things could change. So that feels like a, unless I'm not understanding it right, that feels like a really long lead time. That doesn't feel acceptable, what I'm hearing from families right now.
I'm really looking at a two-week lead time from the decision point. So if you make a decision on the 29th, the hard part on the 19th is that week before is MEA. So my recommendation is to not start something the week prior for a day or two and then stop. Instead, give it, give it that extra grace of starting the following Monday. The rest of them are, it's intended to be about a two-week lead time when you throw in, if you look at that, kind of the calendar. So that was my intent, finding the dates that land on the calendar as a, at least as a starting point. But, you know, we'll take our guidance from the board. We just want to make sure that we make those transitions where successful when we do them.
Okay. So at this point, are we considering moving to in-person any earlier than October 19th?
Well, we're not, I'm, the next point for you to potentially make a decision, now, I would bring a recommendation to you on the 29th. And that could be stay in hybrid, because we've got two more weeks of data watch. You know, if we continue where we're at and go the right direction, then that could be moved towards more in-person learning. And from our team's assessment, using our readiness indicators, our feeling is we need, it'd be nice to have a two-week lead time to let families make their plans and let staff know when they're, you know, for our elementary, for example, they're moving out of hybrid into, into full in-person learning. So just giving it the amount of time to launch that successfully. If the board's direction is to do that in a more expedited way, we'll have to, we'll have to find a way to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Director Russell Walton?
Thank you. Yeah, I would, I really appreciate, my number one question coming in was just what is, what are those points where we would potentially make a shift? And I really appreciate that. I know across the different districts, a lot of districts are making those decisions. Deciding, you know, what increments, at what increments where we potentially shift. So I appreciate that. As I look at, you know, I don't really have any questions, just more comments along the lines of Director Muscata Jones. I know one of the things that has come up a lot is if you're in distance learning academy, how would you ever switch to hybrid potentially? And you know, you, you address that. So, and of course, the same with the IEP is just, just concerns over, I know as DLA, you get started, you know, staffing is still being done. So just ensuring that our students have the supports they need. And I know, like I think about even my daughter who's in speech, she has an IEP, you know, we've heard from the, you know, her speech teacher, but just is more, just more communication and they're kind of setting that up now. So I understand that we're all waiting. Around the connectivity, I just continue to just wrap my brain around just that, just understanding of, you know, what's emboldened around internet connectivity. I mean, it's exasperated, the gap in connectivity has really exasperated as a result of COVID-19. Just the multiple people in a family that are trying to access internet. And I'm just wondering if Anthony, I know you talked about the internet support plan for hotspots. But is there anything else that we're doing with our families, just knowing that, you know, things change, financial situations, the programs change, the programs are ending for access to any type of, access to the internet? And so I was just wondering if, how we're plugging in, larger even than our district, are we working with the cities? Are we working with the state? Are we working with the counties?
I'm waiting for Anthony to walk in in a second.
I can, I can, like, kind of hear, I was also like-
Because we were, we are pursuing some other partnerships and grant opportunities that we've been working on with the city of Brooklyn Park. As long, also our education foundation is also trying to work on a plan as well. So I don't know if I bought you enough time, Anthony. Those, I would say those things are still in motion. And while Anthony's getting settled, just so I don't lose the thought, you know, we are intending to have a process for transitions from DLA at the trimesters. So that's a natural point where we can plan because it really impacts transportation and staffing. So we have to have lead time to, for those operational pieces to make sure we're not over or understaffed if we have lots of movement. So if we let that happen at any point, we'll constantly be out of balance, right? So we'll, we'll create natural points in time and it works best for us at the trimester breaks when classes tend to shift.
Yeah, and I can add a layer to that. So we will do it through a transfer request process. So if they're in DLA and they want to request a transfer, we're going to communicate probably mid-October what that process is. Our ask is going to be that they have to complete the request 30 days in advance of the try. So we have 30 days to determine if there's enough staffing to actually safely transition a student back in. So any transitions that occur are going to be based on staffing, health and safety to make sure whatever model we're in, we can actually support additional staff or additional students moving into those buildings. So we will be partnering with those buildings based on those unique requests that, that come in at each try. So I caught the first part of your question related to internet connectivity. I don't know if I fully got the question, but I can talk about specifically, there's, there's the short term to work on addressing how we're going to make sure kids are connected. And then there's, I think I heard Cory said, we've got some long-term conversations that continue to happen that stretch beyond our school district to try and create more of what, what I call providing us internet as an essential service to our, our students and our community members. In terms of students and families, so we're still running and working a hotspot program. So last spring, based on the data that we collected as we connected and met with families, we had identified 350 roughly families that needed internet connectivity support. We brought in enough resources to get those students connected. So we're still working on that data from the spring, but have looked at contingency. So we have an additional 150 to 200 hotspots that we have, we've got allocation set aside to order if the demand warrants it. So that we can cover all students who may have internet connectivity issues through the course of the school year. So that's how we're addressing that piece, students and families that are having internet connectivity issues. We ask that you go speak with your site. Homeschool sites know what the process is. We've got an internet connectivity request form that the school completes, comes back to our network team. And then our network team can actually reach out to the family and they will get them checked out with an internet hotspot if, if that's the most appropriate method to get them connected. We do have conversations with families to look at what other additional resources are out there, just to make sure they're aware of what could be there to help get them connected on something that's not a checkout device from the school district. But again, we, we're working to make sure we've got those devices ready to go. Beyond that, we're kind of in a little bit of a pause state just to get the school year started and up and going. But up until the very end of August, I was still having conversations with Hennepin County and the city of Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Bridge Alliance and some other agencies that have reached out around broader internet connectivity access and support for families. I know the city of Brooklyn Park has explored doing some programs with their CARES dollars for this year. I think that's, for them, it's kind of a first step in exploring what the possibilities are, where they're doing sponsorship grants to families who need internet connectivity through Comcast. We've had some conversations around that idea with Hennepin County as well. There's not necessarily a full-blown solution in place as different cities are looking at different avenues. I know city of Brooklyn Park and city of Brooklyn Center are also looking at their community spaces and where they expand their own Wi-Fi network out that they service and support. So there are broader conversations going on that will continue throughout this year because I think there's a multi-agency belief around how we better support all our families around internet connectivity and look at it and view it as an essential service for families rather than a, you know, a commodity utility that exists.
Is there, thank you so much. That's really helpful and I'm very encouraging. So is there any way that you're, that you know, if, like, do hotspots? I mean, I know they're temporary, but are they, and we, I know it's only the second day, but is there a way, we're kind of looking to see how reliable they are?
Yep. I, I can assure you, we've looked at the download and upload speed of the hotspots that we have within our area. Now, if you were to take it way up north, it, it might struggle. But within the metro area, it's more than sufficient to support the, the student needs. When we look at what the upload and download usage of a Google Meet, that's going to be the most taxing issue on a hotspot. It, it, it can support multiple students on a Google Meet. We're talking, you know, if you get to four students trying to use that hotspot, trying to stream a Google Meet. Yeah, in the same household at the same time, there might be some struggles. But two to three students on a single hotspot streaming video at the same time shouldn't be an issue. Now, we see a similar issue inside our own network with students that struggle on some of their devices, where they've got multiple tabs going, streaming video, streaming music and trying to run their Google Meet at the same time. So that's where we run into challenges. And when we talk and navigate with families, how can you make your internet speed work better? Close all your tabs, make sure you're focused on just the one instructional piece at a time.
That's my house.
Yep.
We have a lot of people on.
My house as well.
Yeah, thank you, Anthony.
You're welcome.
Um, my last question, or my second question is extracurriculars, sports, theater, orchestra, band, student council. How does all, I mean, I think that is such an important part of your school experience, you know, that social piece. And I am really concerned, I just want to, you know, how is that being evaluated, given the models that we're in or potentially moving into?
Well, we're trying to offer them at every model, right? Even, even with our distance learning academy, we, we actually have a number of openings. We're still filling in band, orchestra, choir. It's a different challenge doing it virtually, as some of you may have heard over the spring. As we bring in students into hybrid, that'll be easier. Those are, you know, more in-person things. High school league will determine on athletics and sports, which they've done for the fall. We're already starting to wonder about winter athletics. And then some of the other activities, it depends on the activity. So I think there was a good question that came up recently around theater and that involves sometimes a larger number of students. So can we find a way to do that in smaller groups, safely distanced? And probably missing out on the larger performance type opportunities. Clearly, we're not going to be able to bring a lot, you know, large numbers of spectators in either or attendees. But from a participation standpoint, is there a way to break activities down into smaller groups? Which, and then we get into sort of the way we're identifying coaches and do we have enough coaches if we're breaking them into smaller, or, you know, instructors in little smaller groups. So from a sports standpoint, we're just following the lead of, of the high school league. And then with our activities, making some determinations with our activities coordinators and what's practical and what can be done. And still following our, our requirements around distancing and so forth. So we're still kind of working through how to make that happen. I think band, orchestra, choir, those really kind of happening regardless of the model. It just looks different, feels different.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, I strongly support that.
And I have one follow-up to Director Simons' question before. I think I, I think I have a little typo on the calendar that November 9th date for model takes effect, I really think should be November 2nd. Yeah. Because really what we're hoping for is about nine to 10 workdays in between the shift. So we've got some holiday issues here. And like, for example, on the first one, that 10-day window would put us, October 13th, that's the Tuesday before MEA. So that Tuesday, Wednesday, it's hard to start a new model for a day and then take a long break. We thought that was the shift. The one I'm probably most concerned about is the last one. The time between December 15th and January 4th is only six workdays because of that holiday break. So we'll know better as we get closer to that point in time. It's sort of a potential calendar is how I'm looking at this, is fully using our built-in meeting dates as that opportunity to make decisions. And then depending on how we progress, we might be able to squeeze this down a bit more. But that's the one change I did find. So we got 11 workdays in that first segment. If it's November 2nd, on that second segment- If it's November second, on that second segment, it's nine. The next one is about, is, is ten workdays and then it's six on that last one. So that was our, kind of our starting point.
Yeah, and I, I'd reiterate that I, I think the board would be very open to meeting as needed to make the right decision timely for our, our families.
I have a question, or I have a couple. The now more than ever, our parents are absolutely critical to the successful education of their children. And I want to thank every one of them who's been stepping up and, and sometimes ending the day in tears. You know, it's very difficult. We have tried to support them. We talked about the student backpack, the parent family toolkit. Could you tell me a little bit about how many times those have been accessed, downloaded? Are we getting feedback? How useful is that? And if it is useful, how can, and, and not being used, can we get that out there to a wider audience if indeed, you know, we, we've seen a, a lack of use? Because right now, anything we can do to help our parents, help their kids either during the regular classes or if that's not enough for them to take it outside and, and do additional work with them?
So our parent webinar series where we had full fully registered sections, Google Meet only handles, I think, up to two fifty or two seventy-five. And we recorded those and I put those out on YouTube so people can access them beyond those sessions.
Right.
And those were just last week that we, it goes, or last, over the course of the last two weeks, I guess, we did those. And our, for example, our DLA session was fully, I mean, is fully attended. We, we, you know, more than, more registrations desired than we had spots for, that were allowed. So I would have to lean on Barb and, and Michael, you helped organize those. I don't know if you want to add any comments to this, but.
Yeah, I mean, how many views on, on?
I'd have to pull the analytics. I don't have that. We could get the analytics on that. I don't have it on top of my head, but I don't know, Michael, if you have any idea. And there's Robin too, so, great.
Sure. So the question around the backpack, I heard that and then was it?
Backpack, the toolkit, the webinars, I mean, are we tracking the usefulness of them? How many people are downloading them? Are we, are, are parents aware that they're out there on YouTube and available and for viewing even after they missed it, you know, live, so?
Sure, absolutely. We don't have the analytics for the backpack. I think that's something that we can certainly look into. As far as the YouTube, we know we got about five hundred views for the, the YouTube video or the webinar specifically for the backpack and some of those family resources, so. And that's on the website. And if you go to YouTube, you can top, uh, search Osseo area schools and it will come up there.
Okay.
Rob, is there anything else to add there?
We, I, I did notice something. I don't know if it's a typo in the way it's been placed or not, but for instructional preparedness and content for the DLA, we, we're stating that only fifty percent of our leaders believe that our teachers are up to date with Schoology. Now, we've been using Schoology for years, so is, should that be flipped with CSO since that's new under DLA three? Or do we really have a problem in, in training in the use of Schoology?
Um, the fifty percent, if you're looking at DL three, is that right, Mike?
DLA three.
DLA three. So fifty percent of teachers have completed the seven-hour professional learning requirement. We're halfway through the window. So half have completed it halfway through the window. We got that, they have until October nineteenth to finish it. If that's the one, oh, you're talking about Schoology.
I'm talking about school leaders reporting a high level of confidence. It's only fifty percent for Schoology and that, that's concerning since we've been using it for several years. But again, in your other one, it was meets Schoology, CSO. So I don't know if you ranked them by numbers or if it got mixed, that's all.
Yep.
Steve, I, you can add to this, but I guess the early response would be, is the fact that the classes were not set up at Schoology at that time because we were still kind of level loading and assigning teachers to different classes. So they did not have the opportunity yet to construct their class. But then obviously there is a level of proficiency there based on last spring and obviously right now. And that's one of the pieces in which there's professional development about right now. And to your point, Mike, there's, uh, this gives us indicator, right, to make sure that we can go back to some of our leaders in our various places and say, help us understand where those gaps are. We can be very, very intentional about providing that support, coaching and coming alongside people to ensure there's high level of success. We want to learn from where we've come from and we want to be collaborative in that process. Another indicator is that there's been staff members from around the district going to, uh, come into the DLA and, and help and support in various areas. So it's a indicator that we, we have right now, it's certainly not a finite data point, but it's a data point that we can at least ask some more questions around and make sure that there's a level of proficiency that would serve our scholars appropriately.
Okay, yeah, proficiency and is it up to date with all of the tools ready to go, those are two different things. And if it was a proficiency issue, I'd be more concerned, but it sounds like it was getting it up to speed with all the classes. And again, we're running late and I understand that, so.
Yep, so it's more about just making sure within the, the platform, obviously the student platform that that you can set up your classes and so forth to make sure that they knew what classes they were, so then they can run those classes. Absolutely.
All right, thank you. That was the end of my questions. Start again, Don, if there's any follow-up, and if not, I mean, we can ask them separately, but is there anything you want to ask superintendent or anyone else?
I did have a question. When we were talking about, don't leave, you know I'm looking at you. When we were talking about the Minnesota State High School League and sports and stuff, it looked like you had something that you wanted to add to that and I'd like to hear that before I ask my question.
Sure. There wasn't much, I think Cory did, really spoke to it quite well. The other piece that we know that there's rumblings around volleyball and football kind of coming back a little bit. And the other nuance, Cory spoke to the athletic directors, just really working collaboratively. We do know that we're offering, one of the pieces were some of our musicals. So we've really kind of reduced that down. So that's something that we're working on a COVID plan to offer some really limited musicals here in the fall. That's gonna be Osseo Senior High as well as Maple Grove Senior High School. Otherwise, they're pretty much pushed out to the spring. So those are the things that we're looking at, building out a, a plan, looking at how we can do some practices virtually and so forth. So we know the value of those extracurricular activities and kudos to the staff who is working tirelessly and, and being innovative to try to figure out how we can provide those meaningful experiences.
So I just have a couple of questions. I know that our staff have been working really, you know, all of the staff involved in the extracurriculars, the musicals, drama, band, orchestra, our kids are missing out on a lot of these performances, kids are missing out on sports. While some of them are still running, they're running in a different way and some, of course, have been postponed or canceled for the season, which has been really hard on a lot of our families and families in Minnesota. I'm sure that you've probably heard about the lawsuit against the Minnesota State High School League. If you haven't, you know, maybe we should connect with our athletic directors on that. But there's a lot of concerns from our community about what are our other options so that we can still offer sports? Maybe we can't do high school football the way we normally do, but maybe we can offer a smaller rec club team or, or something like that, especially for our high school seniors who won't have opportunities to do these sports later on. So anything you can say to that would be helpful.
I, you know, as far as the, the rec team, obviously that's not something that's sanctioned, you know, by us that would obviously go through the Minnesota State High School League and so forth. One of the things that the Minnesota High, uh, State High School League has done is provided opportunities for practice, right? That's with volleyball and football. That certainly doesn't replace Friday night lights or, uh, practice, or volleyball games during the week. But it does kind of speak to camaraderie, speaks to opportunity, get some potential game film, if you will, based on practicing and so forth. But there is, there is no replacement. So I, I'd be standing up here lying to you to suggest that there's, there's something that we could offer tomorrow or the next day that would, that would, would, would replace that experience. The reality is that there's not, but we want to make sure that we are working in close collaboration with the Minnesota State High School League. And if there is new development, rest assured, we're gonna work diligently to make sure that we offer those.
Thank you. I have another question, but it's actually for Cory. So thank you. So my, my last question is to the questions that I was getting at about returning back to school and in addition to Tanya's. You know, when we look at the calendar and we look at the data points that we have from the county, the case rate data and the timeline, by the time we come back to our next board meeting, we will have had seven weeks of case rate data. Hopefully indicating that we can return our elementary school students back to classrooms and then additional two weeks. So we're talking about like nine weeks of positive, positive, not positive cases, but you know what I'm trying to say.
Declining rates.
Thank you. So if you could just.
We don't know if it'll be nine weeks of declining rates.
We don't.
That's one thing I'll point out. And it could turn this week, who knows, right? So that's why I, I think it's, I, my recommendation to have some set dates on the counter. If, we can always call a special meeting. What I don't want us as a system to be doing is moving very rapidly in and out of models and not doing it well and, and really disrupting our system more than we can handle, right? So if that's the direction of the board, then we'll go that route. But right now, we want, you know, what we've been focused on is getting a high-quality distance learning and a high-quality hybrid model prepared. And watching that and while we're continuing to track this, I, I prefer to have some potential markers on the calendar when decisions will be made. So we can take all the information in addition to case rate data, our ability to do transportation, food service, instruction, staffing, all those things that, these ten indicators, right? That are all critically important for our success to, to do well, as you heard tonight. We could see a, uh, either a quick drop or a quick spike and we can always call a special meeting, we can do that. But I, I like the idea of mapping out potential touchpoints for us to at least forecast when we would be making some decisions so that we can collect the data in between those segments. That's just kind of my, my best thinking on it right now.
So my comment to that would be that I agree, we need to have a high-quality hybrid program while we're in hybrid. But I think it makes more sense to get our kids back in classrooms sooner rather than later when we could potentially make a, make a decision right now to have kids back in class in two weeks.
That would be up to the board to decide. My next opportunity to bring a recommendation is at the next board meeting. So, and that's, right now, we are so immersed in preparing. That's just kind of where our reality at, where we're at right now. This day two of school. And you had made your decision just recently to start on the twenty-eighth in hybrid. And I, I just believe we need to honor that decision and continue to evaluate our information and and then make that next decision at a, in a timely way, but in a way that we can implement that successfully. My recommendation to the board and you, you can guide me otherwise.
No, that was a recommendation you made earlier. So Director Muscata Jones, any questions?
Yeah, I have a few probably for Michael. Aren't you glad you cleaned the microphone? I bet you're really excited about that. So one of the things I see is probably one of our potential issues with moving in and out of models is communication. And so I am specifically asking about support for parents to get that communication specifically for our parents that don't speak English.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cause I understand translation takes quite a while.
It's, it takes a while. And certainly that's a gap that we're, that we're cognizant of and that we're, we're mindful of. We are working with some of the funding streams that we have, working with Ron to see if there's some contracting agencies that we can explore. We have some posted positions as far as bilingual assistance to help us expedite the critical communication that goes out. Obviously, the last thing we want as we navigate and are potentially fluid between models is the fact that some of our scholars who, you know, if I'm being transparent, did not fare well. And that's, I, I, that's not a fault of theirs, that's a fault, I'll, I'll say because I'm standing here, my fault as an educator that we did not get that information to them. So we want to make sure that there's not, you know, a compound implication there. So we want to make, that we're mindful of that. And we have some plans, we've talked internally around, you know, how do we do some backward mapping, backward planning to make sure that there's some alignment with those communications? But the reality is, is that there's a lot of communication and not a lot of people to do that, but we're certainly working diligently to make sure that each of our stakeholders are engaged and they feel valued by, by our intentionality of engaging them.
I appreciate that. My next question is similar. So I've also heard lots of stories of people ending the day crying, including myself the day before I started classes.
I was gonna say, Jackie, how'd you hear about that? I thought I was just crying in my car on the way home.
Yeah. I, I've never had to make twenty sets of everything and send it home with kids before that we have in class. But I'm concerned about our parents and the support that they may be getting from us or not getting. I know that, you know, we have these great backpacks and webinars. What are we doing for the families that don't understand English or don't have access to computers or, or can't, I mean, I had one family that gave me the instructions on how her kid was supposed to get to Google Meet and it was through this, that and the other thing. And she was confused and that makes me nervous when we're talking about families that don't understand English or may not have the, the same education as maybe whoever wrote those instructions.
Absolutely. You know, and, and again, I guess I would just reiterate the fact that, that we're cognizant, we're aware of that. One of the things that we are working on is even for the webinars last week, that we're working to translate them. We have had internal discussions as well around having kind of affinity groups as it relates to webinars as well, as new information comes available. So those are things that are, are forthcoming, that, that we're working on. And certainly as we think about strategies to engage our community, those are things that, that we're working on. And again, we, we're looking at a position to hire that's going to help make sure that we're positioned appropriately to, to hear those stories. Because all I can do is operate on, on best intent and moral imperative. But we also want to make sure that we hear those stories and then we can be responsive in a meaningful way.
Yeah, I'm very excited for that position.
Robin, do you? Just stand back there.
We are in crisis of getting all of our links, all of the resources, the student backpack and the parent toolkit translated right now. It's already, um, the documents that go with CSO, I believe we have been translated into English and Spanish and some of our other languages also. But we're working on getting all of those links translated into multiple languages.
And I assume you have all the tutorials for CSO and everything for all the families, yeah?
So our bilingual assistants are working on doing that presently.
Fantastic, thank you. I appreciate that.
Do you have another one, Jackie?
Not right now. Other people have some.
All right, Director Simons, do you have any more questions?
Yeah, my final too. So first a comment, absolutely agree with the comments around what can we do as alternatives? So really kind of what's the mindset of what's possible, what can we do if we can't do something? So I saw over the spring and summer, coaches were just amazing and connecting with their athletes in different forums, whether that was just on Facebook to say, hey, guys, like, do this today. So anything we can do because it's about connection and it's about maintaining connection and virtual connection can, can still serve that purpose. So again, if it's, if kids can't get together and play music, can we have a different way of having a club that appreciates music? So just, we really need to be innovative to make sure that those connections, those clubs, those extracurriculars don't just disappear, but we can do something that might not be quite the same, but still serve that need for students. So then my question comes down to benchmarking and learning. So how are we, how are you feeling about how our district is performing in readiness or kind of understanding some of our challenges and kind of what we're doing well? Like how, I know Cory, you do meet with a lot of other superintendents and other districts and just, can you comment on kind of, you know, how we're thinking about that benchmarking kind of peer set and where we want to be, what we're learning and maybe even any mechanisms we have in our district to be bringing forward great ideas that we need to be kind of really quickly moving on to implement so we're efficient and effective and just being able to be agile and adapt to serve our students.
I guess I would start with, we're one of the first districts to develop a decision matrix like this and a dashboard. Uh, that was shared at AMSD last week. I've been contacted by about ten districts looking for what we have created.
Great.
So that's, I think, a process. I, I think it's important for us to have a process. So it's, it's the data, but it's the the different kinds of data. It's the consultation process and it's a process for developing recommendations and then making decisions at the board level when it's district-wide. So just having a process established, I think, something others are asking, how do we? are asking, how do we, you know, how, how are we doing that? Um, I think to your, your second question's harder. I think we have been so fully immersed in getting the year started. Um, we've been trying to be really agile with just getting, getting yesterday started and then getting the 28th started and we're so hyper-focused on that. So I think everything you kind of described is everything we're leaning on to pull that off and, and do it um, in ways we've never done before. So, um, and you can hear some of the curveballs that we've been throwing and unexpected blind spots that we find as you get into implementation processes too and having to adapt and um, overcome barriers you didn't anticipate, right? So, um, as I was listening to you ask that, I thought, boy, that's exactly what we're doing the last couple of days as we're planning and then reacting to when plans, you know, when, when you learn something new, you gotta make adjustments and we've just been constantly doing that. And so I, I really do want to give a ton of credit to our, all of our staff who have had to be adaptable and agile when things haven't gone exactly as planned. Um, we've had very little experience to fall back on with some of these models. At least the one we had last spring, we knew we had to do it better. And so we were really hyper-focused on doing that distance learning better. So I think my hope is as we continue to move forward, we'll identify those kinds of opportunities and how to continue to be innovative, cause we've been kind of forced to do it, right? And maybe that reinforces, that's just how we need to continue to function. So that's kind of my, my reaction to, to that question. Tanya?
Thank you.
Director Dossel.
Yeah, I mean, just to piggyback on that, I would agree. I'm, I'm, I feel privileged to be sitting as vice chair of the, of AMSD. So I talk to a lot of directors across Minnesota and specifically in Hennepin County and our district is ahead of that um, curve in terms of identifying, um, as I look at these dates, um, a decision-making point. So I, I do concur with that. Um, I, you know, our parents are, and families, grandparents are, you know, I mean, they're incredible. And I have seen so much feedback, um, expressing frustrations, happiness, sadness, you know, um, mourning of kind of what's this normal school year? So I just first want to just thank um, our parents and um, families and our students for being so flexible and um, nimble and excited. I mean, I know, um, there's, I've seen a lot of students really looking forward to just starting the year out and um, getting going. Um, and with our educators, you know, same, I just think between DLA, hybrid, distance learning, I mean, um, I'm just so appreciative of the, of the educators that we have in our district. And so my question is, um, when, will, will there be another check-in point, like pulse, whether it's a survey or how are we kind of determining another touchpoint with our community? Uh, just to see how, how, how are they, you know, doing in a touch base?
Yeah, I, I'm thinking the same way you are and I want to be able to do this in more of a, a pulse approach and not, uh, we have the deep dive annual ones, that's very heavily analyzed and we get a fifty-page report and it's critical we do that, but also we need more um, uh, frequent touchpoints that may not, maybe don't go quite as deep. It's a smaller question set that we can maybe repeat over time so we can measure our progress. Are we improving on those areas? If we have a finite but really core set of questions that, that we can re, maybe repeat over time. So we just started those conversations uh, this week with when's the right time to do that pulse survey? Um, I like that word.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we can do that fairly frequently to just assess from our stakeholders, uh, that's in that cons, consultation box with staff, families and, and students. And I want to, you know, thank Kelly, you know, uh, his group, um, did a survey, you know, recently in August, we were able to utilize that too. So, uh, we've continued to kind of explore those kind of partnerships, um, that are out there. But I'm, it's gotta be more frequent, more quick and get the, the results back quicker so we can use that information and to make changes, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we got it, we're, we're trying to develop that process right now.
And that was that, is that, I know Kelly did one with teachers, but will, will we focus on families or teachers as well as students?
Both, and I love the student surveys too.
Yeah.
Can we do a, all, all of those in a more nimble agile way, probably a smaller set of questions, but ones we can repeat over time? Okay.
And then one thing, what has been, I mean, since there's so much information, so many ways, whether it's through social media, emails, the robo-calls, like what do you find is the most successful in terms of making sure all of our families, our teachers, you, everybody's kind, just kind of in the know of what, what is happening, you know, because I think there, I mean, this is why this is so helpful, because you can actually say, we have a, this is the plan of decision-making, but um, I still, I still hear some people, like, I was on a, one of my daughter's um, orientation calls and just still, some people were like, wait, what happened, what's going on? You know, and I just think, it was just very telling, it's just very normal, you know, to have that happen, but is there a strategy or is kind of all?
My thinking is it takes, it takes all of them.
Most of them, yeah.
Cause people are plugged into different modes. So we've even learned since I've been here that when we send out an email, I gotta do a phone call first to tell people, check your email.
Yep.
If you even have an email, right? So, um, that, we still have those issues. Um, some really rely on social media, uh, some do rely heavily on our website.
Sure.
So I think we gotta kind of blast on all of those.
All of it, yeah.
And, um, you know, Barb, Barb's the expert on that too, but when, every time we put a communication together, we're always analyzing, how do we ensure it gets to everybody? You know, the translations, you heard Michael say, we're trying to expedite some resources to really help squeeze that time down when people receive information. And, um, what I've seen is everyone has a preference, so we really should be relying on all of them as best we can, or at least pointing people back to where our, you know, our website tends to, how is the most information? How can we point people back to where the best information is? But, um, everyone likes to be pointed in a different way. So it is phone calls, it is emails, it is um, social media. Uh, and word of mouth is still very strong in our district too, right? We've, we learned that as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
So Cory, earlier, uh, you mentioned transp, I believe you mentioned transportation and nutrition staffing probably being the two biggest issues moving into a uh, more uh, basically elementary open five days a week, which would be the next step. Uh, so a, and, and that's where obviously we want to go, that's where the parents want to go, uh, that's where the children want to go. So we're a week and a half out from hybrid, so we're already looking at some in-person nutrition staffing and some uh, transportation changes. But what's it going to take to take that from, you know, four days a week A/B to get a, and this is probably for Troy, but to get a five-day-a-week schedule ready to go, uh, with the period of time, you know, maybe two weeks, three weeks, to get that out, get the cards out, let the parents know for the transportation and everything else? Are we prepping that already? Uh, and, and should we be if we're not?
Right on cue.
Uh, so, um, I think the question was the lead time to go from the A/B model to full in-person?
Yeah, and, um, it may not be so much staffing as just routing.
The routing, I mean, the routing is the big thing right now. So are we already routing for in-person elementary, five days a week?
Yep, that's a great question. So when we put together our routes, uh, for the A/B model, we actually based it on our traditional routes for uh, full in-person, five days a week. So we have two different data sets. Um, it would take some time to do some tweaking because right now as we make changes, that happens every year and once our postcards go out, we'll get hundreds and hundreds of calls and changes made. It will take some time to make adjustments on that new route set and then get the information out to parents. Um, so, you know, one to two weeks, um, certainly was, is what we would need in order to, to be able to get that information out to parents, make those adjustments, make sure that we have the right load counts, uh, so we're not overloaded on those buses, um, and then be able to get those routes to our, our vendors. So certainly the first time through is going to be more challenging because we haven't done that shift before. If we did have to go in and out of that model, I would anticipate, um, it would go a little bit smoother and probably take a little less time as we enter into it again, uh, just because our vendors will be, um, practiced with that, will have those route sets, uh, set up and, and then it's just making those tweaks and making sure parents are notified.
So it sounds like we have pretty high confidence on the five-day-a-week base route that you then base the other things off of. So communicating that to parents now and having them, you know, with the possibility of if we move in this direction, what do you think? So we're ahead of the curve?
Yeah, so we've already, we've already started to do some planning, some, and have some conversation behind the scenes on what that would look like and what that transition looks like. We wanted to be very careful not to cause too much confusion with our parents in sending out information. And so, um, even as we were making the decisions, the, the board was making decisions a couple of weeks ago, we held off on some of the communication for transportation for that reason. So, um, certainly as we get close to the 28th, as we get started in bringing in students in the hybrid model, after that initial um, workload that comes with all those calls and those changes, we will shift right away to planning for uh, the event of all in-person at the elementary and at the high school as well. If we get to that place, uh, we're ready to bring all students back from K through 12.
Okay. And the follow-up question or the part B of that was nutrition staff. I, is that going to be a concern, bringing additional people in, or is, uh, it's just shifting them from doing the weekly meal creation to a daily meal creation?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, another good question. So the, the challenge that we have there is that we are, we're trying to figure out the best approach for our distance learning academy. And the fact that we have so many students that we will likely be feeding in distance learning academy, that will be the curbside as well as, um, the delivery for those. That could change if USDA changes their, um, their free meal program and we go to a, a paid and, and then the free and reduced lunch. We may, um, go down in the level of the number of meals that we'll be serving at that, at that point. So it could allow us to shift some staffing. Um, but we're working through what it looks like, certainly for the A/B model with the DLA and we have a really solid system for that, but we're already thinking through, uh, again, uh, setting up a system for DLA that works now, but also works in a full in-person. So we are working through that. Um, I, I can't say that I can roll that out to you tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but we are already having conversations and planning around what that looks like.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have, Ron, I have some follow-up questions. Um, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, um, logistically, everybody, all the elementary kids coming in every single day, and we still have to follow the guidelines, right? The safety guidelines?
So, um, the, according to the Department of Health and the Department of Education guidelines, if it's determined that we can bring all of our students back, they do make an exception for social distancing, that we don't have to maintain the same social distancing in the classroom. Um, so there's still precautions that they're asking us to take, um, in terms of wearing masks, some of those other cleanliness, washing your hands, using hand sanitizer, some of those pieces. Uh, but they're not necessarily expecting in the classroom for social distancing with the separation of the desks. Um, we, you know, we would have to work through what is it going to look like, for instance, for, uh, for lunches and cafeteria, because at that point, they're taking their masks off in order to eat. Um, and so those would be some of the challenges that we have to work through as we look at bringing more students back in. But there's not the same level of um, requirements by the Department of Health and the Department of Ed as it relates to bringing all students back.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, I, uh, unless there's any final questions, I think we've covered this uh, pretty in-depth and I want to thank everybody for being here, coming in, answering questions and Cory for being well-prepared to, uh, to get this done. So thank you very much. Uh, next item on the agenda is the budget planning. So Ron left and he needs to come back.
Time for the Ron Show.
So preliminary levy, Ron Meyer and Kelly Benusa.
He just likes to make a grand entrance.
Yeah, there we go.
And again, board members, you, some of you have been through this before, but I think it's a good refresher every year, um, to just get re-grounded, because there's always some nuances that is important to care about as we move back into this process. So that's why we thought, um, it'd be good to, to keep this on the agenda tonight. So, Ron should have stuck, or maybe I went to get his materials too.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Sorry about that, I had to go get my notes. Uh, good evening again. Uh, so we want to just take a few minutes, uh, this evening to set the stage for our levy process. Uh, this is levy for 2020, which is payable in 2021, and it's important a part of our fiscal process for our 2022 budget. Well, we don't have concrete data yet.
Sorry, the screen, is the screen running for our viewers? Cause I'm not seeing anything on my screen. Like, are we doing these up there or not?
No.
There's no presentation. Nope, it's just your, your handout.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, while we don't have any concrete data yet this evening, um, since the Department of Ed is still working through all of those levy details, but we wanted to just take a moment tonight to re-ground the board on what they can expect at the September 29th school board meeting. At that time, we will ask the board to approve the levy at the max. And so to get us started, um, I'm actually going to turn it over to Kelly Benusa, who's our director of business services. And she's actually going to walk us through first our budget process and then we'll be able to see where that levy, uh, fits into that process. So with that, I'll invite up Kelly Benusa.
Good evening. Tonight in, on page two of your packets, if you're following along. Um, tonight, we are kicking off the long-range financial planning process for fiscal year 2022 budget planning. This is a model that has worked for us over time and we want the board to be aware of what staff will be doing over the next several months. The timeline should look familiar and we want to point out items highlighted in blue. This is where the board is required to take action. That first date on our timeline is September 29th and that's the first step in the revenue process. And then it culminates with the June 22nd meeting, when the board approves the budgets for fiscal year 2022. So if you go to the next page, page three in the packet, it's the visual timeline. This timeline begins October 9th and is based on prior year feedback from budget manager that they needed a little more time to, um, finalize their submissions. And we have forty-eight working days in total until December 18th, the par narratives and the capital red request deadline. The board action on this document is in red. On December 15th, the school board will be asked to certify the final levy. On February 23rd, the school board will approve all fiscal year 2022 operating fund budget adjustments and capital budget. And then on June 22nd, at our regular school board meeting, the board will adopt the fiscal year 2022 budget for all funds. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Ron.
So that's, that gives you a little bit of the timeline in terms of our full budget process. It looks very similar to previous years. Um, and so if you flip to page four of your, uh, your board packet, um, this diagram illustrates the levy process throughout the, the entire season. At the top, uh, you're going to see that in July and August, our team is busy submitting information to the Department of Education. This, uh, includes things like our community's population data, our long-term facility maintenance plan, our average daily membership estimates, our various lease amounts, our debt service schedules, and also some of our transportation data. All of this information is then used by the Department of Ed to calculate our initial levy numbers. And the deadline for, uh, the department to certify levies to districts is actually September 8th, which was just last Tuesday. This year, we actually did receive our first levy run on the afternoon, a late afternoon, um, of Tuesday the 8th. And there, and then from there, business offices like ours, uh, in every school district, start the process of actually reviewing the data to ensure its accuracy and also to understand how the changes from the previous legislative session may impact the levy. So last Thursday, uh, the Department of Ed presented a levy workshop that, uh, Kelly and I were both able to attend. And it walks through all of those changes and then also gives some framework to the numbers. At the September 29th school board meeting, we will be requesting the school board to approve the preliminary levy at the max. And so I want to just be clear again on what that actually means, because it can sometimes be confusing when we use the phrase approving at the max. This can sometimes be misconstrued, uh, that the board is actually approving maximum dollars. And the reality is, is that the brew, the board is actually, uh, in that instance, approving the maximum flexibility for us to give the Department of Ed as well as our business office staff some more time between now and then, uh, September 30th. This year, it's a little bit different because there's only one day in between when the board will be asked. there's only one day in between when the board will be asked to approve at the max, and then when the, the changes are actually, we need to certify it on the 30th. We can, and last year, if you recall, we had to request an extension to that, because the Department of Ed was still calculating our LTFM dollars. The board still has the full discretion if they choose to actually under-levy then when we come to December. And we have had some of those conversations, if you recall, in recent years in December to, to potentially do just that. I will say, once again, this year, we have a lot of challenges with our levy that we're working closely with the Department of Ed. They've had a change in their, their platform system for the levy, and they've also had some staffing challenges. And so, they're working very hard to get the updates, in particular, from some of our debt items, as well as our long-term facility maintenance. And so, we're working very closely with them to get them updated, and we're hoping to have some pretty concrete numbers by the 29th. What we wouldn't be able to do, if we don't approve at the max, is to increase the levy down the road if the numbers change. So, if we approve a certain dollar amount, and then we found that the Department of Ed made an error that they corrected, we would not be able to levy for that amount if we do not approve the levy at the max. So, approving at the max gives the board the maximum flexibility to have all of the data finalized in order to make the best decision in December, when we actually approve the levy. So, now, if we go back to that diagram, September 30th is the deadline, as I just mentioned, for districts to certify the proposed tax levy. And then, as you can see by those yellow arrows, Business Services only has 16 working days to collect the levy data from MDE, make sure it's accurate, and then have to, the School Board certify the levy to the county auditor. Again, we can apply for an extension if we need to. By November 24th, the county then will send out the proposed property taxes to each taxpayer. And on December 15th, at the School Board Meeting, or before the School Board Meeting, we will hold our truth in taxation meeting. And then, also at that board meeting, we will certify our final levy. This year, the deadline to certify our levy to the county auditor and submit it to MDE is actually December 28th. So, then, if you go on to the next few pages, again, this is an, just an example. It's actually last year's documents that you received in December. And you will actually see an updated, similar document at the September 29th Board Meeting. That's, again, where we'll ask the board to certify the levy at the max. So, if you look at page number five, or starting with page number five, this is a summary of the overall levy amounts for each of the funds that are impacted. And as you can see, the levy impacts the general fund, the community service fund, and the debt service fund. You'll notice there is a fund that is missing, and that's the nutrition service fund. And, and again, that's not impacted by the levy process. So, as exhibited on this page, on September 29th, you will be able to see the total levy, how it compares to last year, and then the overall percentage of change. A few things to keep in mind, some things that you may see this year on the 29th, when we bring this document updated to you. The first is that our overall net tax capacity continues to slowly increase. This year, a little bit different than in previous years, our enrollment has actually gone down slightly in our estimation for future levy. So, as board members know, the bulk of the levy numbers are based on these two data points, the net tax capacity and those enrollment figures. So, we're monitoring closely to see what this intersect actually will mean for our final levy numbers. The second thing to keep in mind is that we, when we passed the operating referendum in 2013, voters approved an inflationary increase along with that. So, this year, as part of the levy, that increase will be just over 2%. Now, if you flip to pages six and seven, you'll get a little more details on the various levy line components. And I'm just going to highlight or point out a few things on these pages. First of all, those lines that have an X by it are those items that are voter-approved, so we can specifically call out. Those are things you'll see by our referendum, our capital projects referendum, or our tech levy, and then also some of our debt service items. Those line items with a star are those items that have an equalized component. And these are items that the state has an interest in supporting districts by offering some state aid in addition to the levy amount. The important thing to note on these items is that if we under-levy on any of these line items, we also then consequently could lose some state aid. So, we have to be very intentional about that. As you can see, there are several areas in these three funds that have the potential of some state aid attached to it. Now, looking at those line items that have exclamation points, those are areas that are required, that we're required to levy at the maximum amount, and we actually cannot under-levy for. So, these items are in our debt service fund, where we're required by statute to actually levy for 105% of our actual debt service costs. This protects against any defaults. Last year, if you recall, the board agreed to lease levy for estimated costs for the addition to Rice Lake Elementary. Because those additional, those addition costs were actually less than we anticipated, less than we actually levied for, we can expect our lease levy amounts to decrease this year. And we will also see a negative adjustment in next year's levy process for the difference between what we levied last year, and then what the actual debt payments are for that project. The next page shows the community service fund. And we don't anticipate a lot of movement in this particular levy area, but there will be some slight increases to our early childhood, our home visitation, and then our school age care areas. And then, as we look at the debt service category, again, this is levying at 105% of our actual debt service schedule. And we anticipate changes in this area of the levy to reflect some debts that's been paid off, as well as debt service payments for the LTFM bonds that we are planning to issue in October as part of our 10-year LTFM plan that the board approved in July. So, with that, at December, September 29th Meeting, when we made the request for the board to approve the preliminary, preliminary levy at the max, we will have an updated document, just like this example, to show the breakdown of the levy components. Keep in mind, again, that MDE will continue to make changes as well. So, it will continue to work right up to September 30th. We're hoping that we'll have solid numbers on, on the 29th for you, but it is possible that even within that day, on the 30th, they could change, and we may need to ask for an extension if they continue to have some work that they need to do. The last page of your packet, for this particular agenda item, is just an example of the proposed tax statement that actually goes out to taxpayers in November. I have this in here, because I just want to highlight that and remind the board that the school district is not the only taxing jurisdiction that's, that's on these tax statements, that's, that's taxed through the local levy. So, all of those will be included on that tax statement, as well as contact information for us at the district to answer any questions that taxpayers may have. So, with that, I will turn it back to Chair O'Stapi for any questions about the levy process that you may have, and understanding that the actual numbers won't be available until the 29th.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ron. And I'm going to ask the first question, because you just touched on it, this proposed taxes for 2021. It, it will show the market value, it'll show what it was prior year, and then proposed. So, it should very clearly state what the impact on the school district would be in that line item, based upon the rise in value of your house and the rise in value, or decrease in value of the levy. Is that correct?
Yeah. So, the, and Kelly, you might, can speak to this as well. I think if I'm asking, understanding your question, you're asking about the tax form that's sent out to taxpayers in November, is that...
Right. How, we, we had some requests today. How easy will it be to read, and can we make it even easier for, and maybe send out something separate, or put it on our own webpage and not rely on the county to do this?
So, we don't send out, we don't have any part in sending out the actual tax statements. What we can look to do in Business Services is potentially put together a, kind of a guide to how to read their statement, that we can put online and make available to our, our taxpayers, and certainly then point those that have questions to that area on the website. So...
Okay. Good. Thank you. We start down with Kelsey. Do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I just agree with Chair O'Stapi that we do a really great
job on providing some good information that's really consumable by the public, by our stakeholders, by our taxpayers on our budget. I think if we can, like, think about that, how to make some of these pages digestible. I know there's some good links that you already have out there that helps explain kind of the, how funding works. But, I think, you know, when we look at some of these stars and exclamation points on, kind of really truly our prescribed levies by the state, that are not necessarily within our decision authority, I think that'd be really helpful to continue to break that down, to make it really consumable by our stakeholders.
Thank you. Jackie?
I was just going to bring up that we got questions on having a more digestible.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Okay.
I would just add everything that you guys said. And I would also add that a number of people every year, once they get their proposed tax statement, are really alarmed and concerned, because maybe their, the value of their home increased. And I know in past times, we've had like a flat tax, where we weren't having a necessary increase, but that person's educational tax did increase based on the value of their home increasing. And just really explaining that to people in a way that's easy to understand, because, you know, I know the first couple of times I got one of these, I was like, okay. And just, that's what I have to pay, but I didn't really understand that, all the nuances of it. So, just to add that little piece in. Thank you.
Because a lot of homes went up in value.
Just to remind the board as well, the truth in taxation, while that comes at the end of our levy process, so I certainly understand it doesn't give our citizens and our taxpayers an opportunity to ask those questions ahead of time. We do go into some depth in terms of what the numbers mean and things like that. So, we can certainly work on, on a guide that we can try to foreshadow some of that for our citizens and our taxpayers to be able to answer some of those questions.
And, and people have to remember, if, if you looked at, even with the pandemic, market rates for interest rates have gone to the lowest they've, they've been, 2.5, 2.9, 2.0. And there has been some huge increases in housing sales and prices over the last year. You wouldn't expect it, but it's there. And that is something that you're going to have to take a good, hard look at, when you see maybe an increase in your total tax bill. It may not be coming from us, it may be coming from your city or county. But, that is going to be a big impact on many people this year, because we have had some significant housing value increases.
And to Tanya's point, a lot of these things are prescribed. As a board, we can't just say, well, we're not going to tax on these things. So...
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Kelly. All right. Where do you need a break? We've been going at it for two and a half hours. Okay? Nope, hearing none. Next on the agenda item, or it is number five, the district recognized the celebrations. Barb? Run, Barb. No, Barb has been working overtime, answering all the questions that have been coming in. So, thank you, Barb, for all of that work.
No kidding.
I think there's a delay in that room, too. So, they don't know for a while.
Okay.
It's all good.
Here she comes.
There she is.
Here she comes.
If you didn't hear, a big thank you, and take all the time you need, because you've been working way above and beyond answering all these questions.
As have many others.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, board members, the memo you received with your board materials tonight outlines the context and the starting point for your conversation. This topic was generated by a board member's inquiry about which commemorative months are officially recognized by the school district. The memo notes that we have passed practice at the district level, and certainly at the school level, around recognizing commemorative months, but we have not formalized a specific list. In response to that question, then, the memo lays out a starting point for your conversation. As you're probably aware, there are commemorative months for many different areas. I'm suggesting that you start your discussion with the list that is officially recognized by the federal government, and is posted on the Library of Congress website. Those eight officially recognized months are listed on page one of the memo. Please note, too, that the board has already approved official recognition of Juneteenth. So, while that event is not on the Library of Congress list on page one of the memo, it is included in the list of dates you'll find on page two. At the top of page two, you'll also see proposed actions for whichever commemorative months or events the board chooses to recognize. For the commemorations you choose for official district recognition, I would propose providing that list to schools for their consideration, with the understanding that some recognition activities are already occurring at the school level, especially those that have curricular implications or connections. We would also recognize the official celebrations on school and district websites and district social media. As you consider your options, I would suggest that you focus your conversation on what you would like to add as officially recognized events, which means using the Library of Congress list as a starting point. That's my suggestion. Our past practice with regard to education-related recognitions, which are listed on page two, is well-established. So, I would suggest that you consider which events, if any, you would like to add to that list. And with that, Mr. Chair, I would turn it back to you to facilitate board discussion and to provide board direction.
Thank you very much, Barb. I appreciate that. And there's been some conversations prior to this about, you know, what, what do we use as a baseline? And that's where the suggestion comes from, of using what the federal government is already stating. Some people may like that, some may not, but I think that's, that's the place to start. Looking at this, we have Veterans Day, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Black History Month, and I believe, aren't Flag Day, is that also in there? And I thought we, I thought that was one, which was kind of odd, but that we had to have curriculum about that in, in state law. Maybe I'm mistaken.
Isn't Flag Day in July?
Same thing with Independence Day. We're also looking at things in June. So, doing it in July.
It's not on the list of Library of Congress recognitions.
Okay.
Now, it might be. So, you know, there are holidays.
Right.
And then, there are these commemorative events or months. So, it's not on that list for the Library of Congress. It doesn't mean that we couldn't add it to some kind of recognition.
No, I just thought that one was, that we had to. And maybe I am mistaken.
You know what? I'm not, I'm not aware that we have to, but we can certainly look into it.
Okay. And I'll lead with a couple of mine, you know, talking about, if, if we're doing this through social media and website, not having to do it during the school year is fine. So, let's talk about Independence Day. I don't see Memorial Day on here. It is a national holiday, but are we going to recognize that as the school if we aren't already? Veterans Day, we already are. Flag Day, 9/11, First Responders' Day. Those are some things that would tend to be already national recognitions. It may not be on that Library of Congress, but these are things that I think we already do. And if we don't, something like 9/11 and, and that, to recognize that event, that changed our country, as well as first responders who came in to, to help save people, that would be something to take a look at on here. Start, start with Heather, or go to Heather second. Are there any on here that you have a concern about or want to add?
Well, I don't have any concerns about the ones that are already listed, except that my, my only concern is that when we talk about adding, where do we draw the line?
Mm-hmm.
In, you know, because while I think certain days and events are really important, many that are listed here, some that are not, that you've already...
while I think certain days and events are really important, many that are listed here, some that are not, that you've already mentioned, I also don't want to disrupt the flow of educating our students in the classroom to celebrate these holidays. Some of, you know, like, I don't know, you know, you have a class party for everything type thing and, um, also the differentians, differentiation between a holiday and a commemorative event. And, um, that's kinda where my line of thinking is right now, is that like, I don't, there's nothing that jumps out at me where I wanna say, no, we shouldn't do that, but there are some things I feel like are missing and, but I also don't wanna fill up our calendar with all kinds of events every single day.
Very good point, and Barb, as I was asking before, there are some that, that we must do by state law, but when we talk about recognition, this is not necessarily curricular. This is putting out a message, putting out a, you know, something on the website, putting out something on social media, it's not necessarily, uh, forcing a curriculum to be followed and changing what the state standards are, uh, uh, around what we have to teach.
That's how I'm thinking about this conversation. There are many things that have a curricular connection, those things are happening at schools, some of them are required by state statute. Uh, many things are not, and that's kind of the generation of this list, where do we start, talking about things that you might wish to recognize officially as a district? Knowing that things are already happening in schools, especially those things that have a curricular connection. Does that help?
Okay.
So, just to clarify, on, on the proposed actions, it says to provide schools with an official list for their consideration. As a teacher, I might look at this and say, hmm, do I need to figure out how to incorporate this into my teaching? So, you know, just to consider that, I guess.
You know, a- a- as, as you said, it, it is for their consideration, they could mention it, they could not, but again, they have to, they have to follow a curriculum that we have to follow, uh, it's mapped out, uh, I don't know if this would be a whole day's lesson, you can mention it, uh, mention that i- if you wanna learn more, go to the website, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a full-blown program or anything.
I think it's really important that that topic be, um, clearly understood, this is not direction to teachers about what they teach.
Right.
This is in response to board interest in, does the district have a list of official commemorative months? So, we have done things like school lunch hero day, we've recognized National Education Week, we've not done everything that's on this list, and Heather, to I think your point earlier, you gotta start somewhere. So, that's why I turned to, what does the federal government recognize? That list is in this memo, it just seemed like a reasonable starting point, it's really up to you to decide, but it, clearly, this is not direction to teaching staff. This is more about the board's decision to recognize certain things at the district level, up to your decision.
And, I, I think a little bit of my confusion was, this is proposed commemorative events, but we also have all of the days, Independence Day, Memorial Day, Labor Day, that I would suggest that we do commemorate, and I don't know that we do or have if they were out of the school year, but Independence Day is certainly one that would have some sort of notice coming from the school district if we're going to do that type of thing, so adding in any federal holiday on top of commemorative days would probably be a good add. And state holidays, if there is a state holiday, that we at least recognize it.
So.
Does that make sense?
I'm on the website right now for the Library of Congress, and there are several more listed on here than are on this list that we've been provided.
Are you looking at months or days or weeks?
Um, it is the commemorative observances list. Several of them are listed and a few are not. Constitution Day and Citizenship Day is not, is not listed, um, Human Rights Day. Are you looking at the document that was included with, I believe? No, I just went to the Library of Congress's website. Right, so there's a Library of Congress document that I believe was provided in your board materials? Okay. That's the list I referred to. So, really, it's, it's board, we could, we could add every US holiday here, that would be totally fine, it's your decision, this is a conversation that is arising because of board interest, so it's really for you to decide, what would you like to add, or not do that might be already on this list.
So, i- in what you provided us, it says a recognition months, and, and you mentioned a bunch of days.
Yeah, I also have Irish American Heritage Month, which I don't see listed here.
So, this includes days, weeks, or months, and it does not include most of the publicly observed state and federal holidays. You know, New Year's Christmas, um, Memorial, um, so those major holidays that are typically not, non-workdays, I guess, right Barb?
And I would, I would suggest that you think about what is the purpose of rec, of the, um, of the board setting a district list of officially recognized, whatever you wanna call them. Think about your purpose first, and then think about the gazillion dates that exist, cause they do, and see what kind of match you can make.
And, and, you know, I think you're leading us to the fact that we break down our student population by several different items. By state law or by federal law, and I think you've covered, uh, many of these in here. We break them down by men and women, we break them down by sexual orientation, we break them down by race, Hispanic, African-American, uh, we have special education disabilities, Native American, those are all covered in here, and, and, you know, to be honest, I think that's what you try to do here with, with those months, and that does reflect our student population and how we categorize our own students. So, if we're gonna categorize them that way to begin with, recognizing those groups, uh, you know, would seem to make sense.
There's a number of occupations recognized here too.
And then the occupations fall well within what, you know, the school occupations, you're absolutely right, there's paraprofessional days, there's administrative professional days, principals, school lunch, uh, teachers, everyone associated with the education system has something listed in here. You know, and if we can't celebrate ourselves, you know, what can we do, so?
It's not exhaustive of every group, but it includes many.
Right.
I just wanna make sure that we're, um, keeping the discussion to commemorating rather than necessarily celebrating. Cause it's not a holiday, we're not gonna have holiday parties in school. It's more of a, um, recognizing and commemorating and celebrating different identities in our, in our schools, and so if, um, that aren't always typically, um, in all of our curriculum, so, um, it may be an opportunity. For instance, in my school, um, we have a notable persons every week, and we are very purposeful to make sure that those people reflect the students in our, in our school and their, um, all their different identities. Um, we used to do a whole bunch of things during Black American Month and a whole bunch of things during, um, Hispanic Heritage Month or Latino Heritage Month, um, and such, but, um, I think this is a good start to say to our students and families that we recognize these commemorative months and we celebrate and appreciate your identity, that's where I'm coming from.
I'm trying to remember what you said at the beginning, uh, you're right, this is commemorative, uh, but there is a difference, and I think you spelled it out. I- it each school population is very different, and so how do you, uh, you know, I think that comes down to a school leadership of how does that school interact with its?
We also want to, also, okay, for instance, in my school, we don't have a lot of people of Asian-American descent, very, very, very few, and, but we still make sure to have that represented because they're going to be interacting with people of, so I don't wanna say just reflective of your school demographic because the world is a much bigger place than your actual physical school.
Right, and as I was talking about, I think you did make two different points, one was commemoration. That's commemorating all of these groups and, and calling out, and then was interacting with the students in your school, and that's, that's a leadership issue for the school to, to indicate how they wanna deal with it.
Right.
Yeah, so we're not in disagreement.
Right.
So.
Are we going down the line, or?
Yeah, let's, let's head this way.
Um, so I just wanna make sure to clarify, so the commemorative events list, um, for the most part, we said was already kind of common practice? Is that correct, or was this, are there?
The events that have to do with the, I'm gonna say the education industry, so if you look at this list, we've had definitely National Principals Month, School Lunch Month or Week, School Bus Safety, the things that you can see are, are, are part of the work of education, sometimes dealing with an actual position, like principals or paraprofessionals, those things we have passed practice for. We do not have past practice for determining which of the other events, the other commemorative months would be recognized, so that's really where I think your discussion would be helpful, and if you wish to provide direction, we will, of course, comply with that direction. Otherwise, we, we would continue with our past practice.
Yep, so, um, to clarify, that means that, um, we currently celebrate MLK Junior Day, but we don't celebrate African-American History Month today?
We recognize, um, because it's a non-school day every other year? It is recognized on our calendar?
Both.
Um, MLK Day is.
Okay.
Because it is a federal holiday, and I, I believe we alternate Presidents' Day and MLK Day as a non-school day each year.
But right now, we'd have nothing acknowledging that it's African-American History Month or Women's History Month?
Through district-level communications, no, that does not mean that those things are not happening at schools, because of course, those would have more curricular implications.
Okay, so I guess my, um, perspective is that it, it makes sense to have some type of standard so that we're not having whoever wants to throw something in be added at the district level, we get a new superintendent, we get a new, um, administrator at, at a district level, and we, we start seeing proliferation or things coming on and coming off, so I feel like there's value to having a standard. I think that's, I'm guessing that's probably common across most school districts, I would guess. So, so I think that there is definitely value to, to publishing that, and I think it makes sense to have a very objective, um, reference point like the Library of Congress. Um, as far as the specific list, I, I do think I'd like to see July, um, I'd like to see Independence Day and Memorial Day on there personally. Um, I think those are pretty significant.
Is that on here?
So, I, for me, those are, the, some of the federal holidays, I think, should continue to be evaluated to see if we're missing something that are, um, ones that are very commonly recognized, like in different jurisdictions and cities and, and school districts, that's all.
Okay. Dr. Dasson?
So, what I, you kind of alluded to it, but so, we don't have, like, when I look at sometimes other dis- districts, they'll be, you know, they'll have, um, something on social media that says, indicates the recognition of, of the month, and, I mean, really, it's about building community awareness and, um, and really, you know, supporting our students, and I, I, where my, where it doesn't always sit well with me is that when you leave it up to individual buildings, I mean, I know they have a lot on their plates, but, I mean, then it almost feels like we're ignoring some of the, even the ones that are listed on the Library of Congress, so I would like to see some type of understanding of, and I, I, um, of somewhere district-wide, um, yeah, I guess, I mean, it's standardization or like, what, how do we recognize, um, the, uh, different months? Days, weeks, and, um, so, yeah, I would like to see that, I mean, as far as the list, um, I don't, I mean, right now, I, I don't know if I would, you know, nothing's glaring, um, out at me, I mean, I think that, you know, the ones that my colleagues have recog, you know, stated or, you know, would be in line with this, um. But to me, it also looks at like, I think about things, this, not only like are, um, you know, these kind of commemorative, um, opportunities to build community awareness and build community really, you know, a lot, one of the topics that has come up a lot are like school celebrations, and I mean, and maybe this isn't this conversation, but I do know like Halloween, celebrating Halloween at school or having, um, you know, letting students have their costumes and things like that, I mean, I, I think it's, I'm not sure, but I feel like it varies from school to school, or maybe last year it changed. But, um, you know, I would like to take a look at that, and because I think that, again, I'm all about like, really, this community building in the schools and, and having, um, kind of, I think there also needs to be kind of a festiveness as well, um, in our school, so, I, I don't know if that's for this conversation, but I just felt like saying that, so, um, yeah, so I, I just, I would really like to, to know, like, have a more, have a more of a presence on some of the recognition months on, on district-wide.
So, I, I think we're, we're in agreement that what's printed here is a very good start, we would like to see the, you know, this is commemorative, that, that we are going to do some communication about, all these other state holidays are, are things that are probably, or federal holidays are taught in curriculum, and we probably do things at the school level now, but we don't necessarily are making a statement like we would about Native Ha- uh, Native American Heritage Month for Independence Day or Flag Day or Memorial Day, I, I'm sure we do things like that, but it's not in here, so could we add those type of common federally-recognized celebratory holidays to this list, just to ensure that we know what, you know, that we're going to be talking about, you know, with a blurb on a website or, or something on Facebook, so.
Here's what might be helpful, um, I have not reviewed the list of all federal holidays. Might be helpful just to take a look at that and see if, if I can get a sense of your interest, and then add those here, let you take a look at the list again. And then you can provide your final direction on it, would that work for you? So, I have that list pulled up right here, and I think that most of them are ones that we've mentioned, but I think that two of them specifically that, that, um, Thanksgiving and Christmas Day are not necessarily supported by, or, not, I'm sorry, celebrated by, um, the majority of our district, and we should also consider, like, if we're gonna celebrate Christmas, do we celebrate other nationalities holidays like that, and?
Uh, again, it's not.
Not celebrate, commemorate, sorry, and the other one that really stuck out to me is Columbus Day, which has had a lot of controversy in recent years about even the acknowledgement of it. So, and, and so I think that, I guess, where do we draw the line?
But, I'm sorry, but I, aren't we, but that's, I don't know, I didn't see Columbus Day on here.
It's not on that list, it's on the list of federal holidays, which we were talking about possibly considering that list in addition to these commemorative events. Would this be something you'd be interested in? Perhaps the federal holidays that are actually directly connected to curriculum? Things like Veterans Day has a curriculum component, I think it's in statute, there's, has to be activities around that. Would it, or maybe I'm thinking of Constitution Day, would it help to start with a, with that list, not all federal holidays, but start with the ones that have a c- a connection, a formal connection to education, and start there?
A lot, yeah, a lot of it would be history, you know, and things like that, so, yeah.
Yeah, and that way, we wouldn't be getting into religious holidays, we wouldn't be maybe veering down a different road, but something that is more connected to schools? Education?
That could be a good start.
Would that help?
Yeah. In the sense that federal and state holidays, kind of, they, they just by nature get more recognition, and, and these are more, let's commemorate some of these events that don't get recognized as, in the same way that a federal or state holiday might, whether it's a day or a week or a month.
Right.
And then, you know, as I'm listening to this too, thinking this would be a good, about this time of year, good to bring it back annually. I don't think we've been in the practice of that, so.
And we could review it, the, I don't wanna get into this being a policy, and Kim's hair's probably standing up on end.
Well, when you talked about celebrations, that, that, I was like, there might be policy around that, when you get into that lane, right?
Yeah.
Versus just commemorative events.
Right.
I, I think I'm hearing some pretty strong consensus, so I don't think.
I think I'm hearing some pretty strong consensus, so I don't think it'll be difficult.
No.
I do have a question, though. Does our curriculum department have resources for schools to, for instance, bring in some of the things that typically haven't been in our curriculum? Like more African-American leaders or people with disabilities who have made, you know, inventions? Or those kinds of things? Do we know?
Well, I'm not in a position to answer that question, Jackie. I would also just urge you also to think about, I believe your interest is not to create more programming.
No, I'm meaning resources.
Yeah, yep, yep, yep. So I just want to keep in mind that, you know, what's the board's interest in this? And then are there questions that you might have about what's already going on in schools that maybe we can look into for you? I just can't answer a question about curricular resources right now.
No, I'm asking because I'm on the Northwest Suburban Integration School District as the vice chair there, and we, they have a lot of beautiful items to supplement many of these.
They do, yep.
And I would say generally, yes, Jackie. I'm thinking of our upcoming Tribal Nations consultation meeting we do with MDE, and they provide us guidance and direction on curricular items around our Indian education program, right? So it's another example.
Okay. Michael, do you have something to add to that?
No, I was just going to talk about just curriculum writing time, right? That's just, we think about...
Yeah, and I think that's a topic that we've had, shown a lot of interest in, in getting involved in how we are directing that curriculum and how we're looking at things going into the future.
So I think you're wise to try to think of this as just commemorative events.
Yeah, yeah, that's something completely different, also a very important topic.
Very good guess, right. So, sorry, Michael.
No, perfect. Just backfill right out of here. Give a flashback. No, Jackie, to your point, obviously, curriculum writing time, that's what we do, and that's how we develop the curriculum. Obviously, each year, we have new courses that come forward and so forth, and to develop and deliver those, we have curriculum writing time, and that's how we make sure that we are meeting the benchmarks and unit planning and so forth.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Barb, I think we have direction.
I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Okay.
It's what you see on your paper here, and I'm going to look at federal dates that seem to be connected to school, and I'm going to come back to you. Do we, does this require board action, or could we just, could I just share it with you and just maybe, so this is a work session?
Right.
When would be the next time you'd want to see it, I guess, is the question?
I mean, that shouldn't take that long to get together. I mean, it's something you can email to us. We can provide the feedback. I don't think there's anything that's really going to be off. If you get our feedback and you see that there's something wrong, then you can bring it up, and we can have another agenda item and talk about it, but I don't, hopefully, that's not a big issue. And if we can agree, then it's not necessarily something that has to come to a vote unless we wanted to go to the policy route. No, it's direction to administration, and we'll leave it at that.
I would just add that, could we go back and take a look at the Library of Congress list that has a couple of other items that are not on this list?
I'm going to go look and see the difference between what you're seeing and the document that I downloaded from the Library of Congress. I'll reconcile them.
Cool, thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, though? So, and then the other piece, and maybe that comes after, but I just really want to better understand kind of district-wide how we support, especially some of the recognized months. Like, I know that, you know, during February, there, you know, Black History Month, there's a couple of events that happen. I don't, I guess what I'm not, it's not clicking for me, is it district-wide that we're saying, yep, this Black Girl Magid event, or I can't remember the one that happened just this February, is something that's district-wide, or is it really specific to like a particular group?
My understanding is that the program events, like activities, are school-level activities. My understanding of your interest here is to have district-wide recognition, which means acknowledging it in district communications, basically, without a programmatic component.
Right.
Yeah, but lots of things happen at schools. Lots of things happen at schools.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Barb. Appreciate it. That leads us to agenda item number six, which is adjournment. Cory, do you have anything to wrap up, follow up with, or?
No, I just want to say I appreciate the feedback for us as we navigate so many new things to start the year, and we really appreciate your support with so many moving parts. And hopefully, you're, what I heard tonight was that you appreciate having a process helps, having some clear decision-making processes and points of determining things will help us through all this, right? So I'm grateful for that from all of you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, this work session is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.